Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to City Hall for tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. I proudly call the City Council meeting to order and I kindly ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kosarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Nine of 10 council members present, life is good. We begin our council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and it's only fitting that we ask this gentleman who will be celebrating a birthday on Friday, Alderman Cavan, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And apparently they're having a festival for you as well.
I appreciate it, I look forward to it every year and I'm turning 35 again this year, so everything's good.
Are you really?
Yep.
My notes say 72, but that's... Congratulations, happy 35th. Ladies and gentlemen, item 3A tonight is to proclaim Emergency Management Agency Week and recognize our friends from the Geneva Emergency Management Agency volunteers. We have a proclamation, but first I just want to throw out a couple words. Reliable, responsive, respectful, passionate, and consistent, I believe partially define the men and women who serve in this organization. And we have some very distinguished members with us tonight. We only have, I think, what is it, five? Five folks? Is that what it is?
Yeah, six here, a couple are on vacation.
That's okay. Do you want to introduce yourself? Warfel, you want to start first?
Sure.
Come on up to the microphone, man.
I think I just hear a woman.
Now, do you want to also share with everyone what I brought you as a gift?
Okay. I'm Kevin Warfel with Geneva EMA, been on the department for 11 years and...
11 years.
Thanks to his daughter and him, I mean, chitlas for my collection from Washington, DC, so thank you very much.
That's great, now we're all gonna go to prison because I brought you that thing. We've had that for a year.
Yeah.
And Emma texted me tonight saying, "You gotta deliver this to Warfel."
Yeah, I texted her this morning.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, that's how she knew.
11 years, huh?
Yeah.
Why? What's the...
I have been trying to get on the police department and that hasn't gone very well with my health, so this is the next best thing I can do.
You share your health story very publicly.
I do.
You are an extraordinary young man. Do you want to share with perhaps those that don't know what you've overcome in your life?
I've had my fair share of heart conditions. I was born with a rare heart condition and three, almost four years ago, I believe it was, 2018, I got the call that saved my life for a heart transplant.
Isn't that something? Unbelievable, man. And you were sending out pictures from the hospital room.
Yes, I was.
And of course Dad was giving us updates as well, as well as Mom.
Yep.
But unbelievable. You look great, man.
Thanks.
Yeah, you look great.
Thank you.
Any messages to the younger folks who might want to follow in your footsteps regarding their service to their community?
If you have a passion and that drive, definitely sign up for, if it's a police explorer program, fire explorer program, anything you guys want to do and just follow that dream. If you have that drive, follow your passion, follow your heart.
Well said. Well said.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask your dad to come up next, man. Dale?
Thanks, Dale.
Now, if memory serves me correct, I believe Dale has been here 38 years?
38 years, yes.
Wow, isn't that something?
I've seen every festival that we have had for many of years.
Multiple times?
Yeah.
Wow. And for those who know you, which is virtually everybody...
Yes.
They know you as someone who's always there.
Yes.
What's so special about Dale Warfel that makes you that way?
Well, I, as my son said, when he was born, the fire department set up a fill-the-boot campaign when he was only nine months old by Dennis Erdakis that set it up. And I said, "From that day on, I am going to serve the city as much as I possibly can."
That is incredible.
And I just like to thank our members for everything that they have done, like Swedish days, spending their whole day out blocking streets, and the stuff that we get called because we are interfering with their route of traffic.
Now, when you say blocking streets, you mean literally laying down?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It hasn't worked for me.
No.
When road closures and stuff like that, it takes these guys and women, when they come back to the office, the stuff that they hear, I give them gratitude because with what I hear, they want to take my job, I'm like, "Feel free, any day." I mean, I'm really proud of these guys and especially that we're just starting to come out of this COVID thing. When we were in the start of the COVID, every one of our members went to Batavia and assisted with the King County. Some gave up their days of vacation from their own job and went over there and worked. I worked every weekend for two months straight over there. It was really rewarding seeing our group going and helping King County OEM, and they were very grateful that we stepped up to the plate...
Of course.
...to help them.
But mutual aid is something that, I know all of you bleed...
Yes.
And mutual aid is something that certainly the tri cities are...
Yes.
...pretty proud of.
Yes. And working with all the other cities, Batavia, St. Charles and stuff, and alongside with the fire department, police department, I think it is a really good system that we have here.
Indeed. How's Mrs. Warfel?
Doing good.
Good to hear.
Yep.
Good to hear. Who do you want to invite up next? I'm gonna put the pressure on you.
I'm...
Someone just snuck out.
James.
James, welcome.
Hello.
How are you, man?
I'm doing good. Dale did not tell me I'd be speaking tonight.
Well, heck, I think it's exciting.
I think it is too.
Yeah.
A little shocking, but it's okay.
Well, to follow Dale, I mean.
Yeah.
How long you been with us, James?
Um, well, let's see, I applied about a year ago and then I've actually been doing work and stuff for the last six months.
So you're one of the new guys.
Yes, I am. I'm known as the new guy.
Yeah, that's good stuff.
EM16, and Swedish days was my first baptism under fire.
How was it? How was it?
Um, it was, I like helping people. Some people don't appreciate it as much as others, but when they close down Route 38 and they direct them down the traffic, people get upset.
I know.
And I had to calm a few of them down, saying, "It's okay, just follow the route around," and most people were really good about it.
Do you recognize any of the faces on the dais who may have sent something to you that...
No, 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 no. It was mostly residents that got a little upset that their driveway was blocked, you know, but most of them were pretty good about it, so... But I joined because I wanted to help out the community.
Absolutely.
My daughter is a police officer, so I felt that...
Oh, wow.
...in Geneva, so I felt that I should help out a little bit too.
Well, I mean, do I dare ask who your daughter is?
Megan Solner.
Officer Sol...oh, yeah, okay.
She's been with the force, I think, two and a half years?
Yeah, three years.
Three years, yeah.
Fantastic. Wow. Do we have to salute you now as well?
No, don't salute me. I did find, though, that with Swedish days and some of the car shows that I did, people come up and think that I'm a police officer. Kids come up, hug my legs and call me and stuff.
That's sweet.
It's kind of cool. As I said, for the most part, people are really good about it and appreciative and stuff, so...
And I'm glad you're enjoying your experience.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And who joins us next? You get to choose.
Hi, my name's Dan Weeseth. I've been with EMA for 11 years.
11 years?
Yeah.
And what inspired you to say, "I can do this," or "I want to do this"?
Well, you know, I kind of, growing up, wanted to be maybe in the fire department or police department and never quite got there and so I saw an ad in the paper and thought, you know, I gave Dale a call and he said, "Well, we help the police and fire departments," so I thought, "That's a good balance, you know, I can kind of belong to both of them and help them."
Exactly.
So that's kind of what drove me.
Have you ever been on storm watch with Dale?
Oh, yeah, uh-huh, sure.
Which sounds kind of redundant, doesn't it? That's intense, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, those are fun, especially when the funnels are going over your head and you're out in the middle of a field, yeah.
And you're radioing back to the chief?
Right, right.
Wow. And are you retired from your other life?
About a month.
No kidding?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
And then what?
Rest.
Rest?
Lots of rest.
Well, we got some festivals coming up, man.
I've been running my business for 48 years, so...
Is that right?
Yeah, I need a little break.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow. We're proud of you, thank you for being with us.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Everybody should know this, gentlemen, for a number of reasons. Right, sir?
Maybe through my brother, but not...
Yeah, well...
Everybody knows my brother.
Nobody likes him, so...
He's the chief of Fire Department in Batavia.
Yes, he is. And former head of the, of our illustrious park, Good Templar.
Yeah, that's going back a few years, but yes.
Yes, I know.
Yes.
And here's what's really scary.
You go back a few years.
He and I used to double date in high school.
I did not know that.
Yes, that was a tragic, tragic series of events there, yes.
I'll ask him about the details.
Don't ask him. Welcome.
Thank you.
Now, you and I were kibitzing out in the foyer and this number's gonna, or should impress everybody, but 41-plus years?
Forty-one and a half, yes.
And you joined, as I understand it, and Dale clarified, in the old days, you could join when you were 16.
Yeah, I joined, I think, when I was 17, yes.
17, right. Now, of course, you have to be 18.
Right, in order to drive and so...
In order to drive, so... So how did you get this done at AIDS?
Well, you're going back a few years, but let me turn the Wayback Machine on.
Yeah.
As I recall, my first event was in December of 1980.
Oh, my...
And what happened was a schoolmate wound up drunk driving, ran into a oak tree at the corner of Logan and State.
Right there?
Right there, and we were...
Blocked all the traffic.
We were doing, yeah, we were doing a, we were videotaping the basketball game and my friend was in it, and it was Dave Morrison, and he says, "You gotta join this group. Hey, we got an accident, let's go." And I said, "Okay, what do you want me to do?" And that was the first event.
Go stand on 38 and stop traffic.
Actually, I think it was on Ford Street, but yeah.
Oh, were you?
Yeah, it was a back road, they kind of put me off the side, nothing's, nothing dangerous. And so, yeah, I directed traffic so people could go around the accident. And obviously, yeah, that was the first one. Wasn't a great event, as I remember, she lost her foot, it was still in the car.
Oh, dear.
So, yeah, kind of a strange lasting memory, but you know, 41 and a half years later.
Actually, let me write this down, "Lost foot." Because that's gonna go, that's gonna be...
You can look it up in the Geneva Republican.
That's, yeah, you could, in the archives probably, right?
Yep, yep.
Are you featured in the archives of the Republican?
I'm sure, somewhere.
Somewhere.
Many times. I used to work a lot of events back in the 80s and 90s.
Unbelievable. And why? Why, what attracted you to this kind of work?
I have no idea.
I mean, that's better to do.
Year after year, of course, even spring breaks, I went to University of Illinois, came back and did, over summers, Swedish days, all the festivals, and I'd go back. We used to work football games and basketball games.
I remember.
Yeah, so we were very busy way back then, a lot of those days.
What did you study at U of I?
Engineering.
Oh, so you've got a busy life.
I like to think so.
And you still find time to, as everyone else has said, give back. Is it more than just giving back?
It's, I don't know how to explain it, but it really comes down to, you work certain events and, let's say, you work a fire or something like that...
Sure.
And the homeowner comes out and says, "Thank you very much for everything you're doing," you know, and it's like, or you find a lost kid and you bring the kid back and they find their parents and they're like, "Thank you for finding my kid," you know, it's that kind of thing. You know, every event is different, everything, you're helping people out, you know, I've helped people jump cars, get their cars started, pulled people out of mud, you know, it just, you know, a lot of things to help the community.
So your call to service and then the service almost becomes exponential because other requests are being made of you?
It's just, you know, just helping people and you get that feedback, you know, you just feel good when somebody, you get the guy's car started and he's out in the middle of nowhere and it's like, "Thank you very much." And, you know, if there wasn't anybody here, I'm not sure what he would have done.
Good.
You know, you're talking years ago and before cell phones and...
Oh, sure.
And, you know, the things we used to do way back when, people getting stuck, people getting in trouble.
So you were dispatched how, through a beeper?
Well, we had, we did have those.
See?
We did have those.
I know, I remember.
You know, geez, you go back years and... The storm watches, of course, originally were teletype. We got them on a teletype machine, telling where the front was and this is where it was and how it's moving, and you'd go out there pretty much and wait, and wait for the storm to come in. So, you know, there was no radar, there was no, and you know, pull it up on your phone today, it was all just hand done and this is what's coming and just wait for one or two hours before it gets there.
And when you're out west, how far out west were you?
Oh, it's, actually, the observation points haven't changed much. Brundage and 38, Resurrection Cemetery. So they haven't really moved much over the years.
Teletype?
Yes, we had a teletype machine in the old office.
How did you communicate back to the office with, or the chiefs, with respect to what's...
You had to, you had to take one of the cars with the radios in the cars. It had enough wattage in order to get back. The old, old two watts and five watts wouldn't do it, but the cars would.
Wow. That's amazing.
Yeah, let me know if you want any more history. I've got plenty of it.
41 and a half years, I forgot, so it's like, unbelievable. Very impressive. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's left?
Well, my wife, who absolutely despises public speaking.
I know, she's looking everywhere else but at you. It's like, Chris, you want to come up? You don't have to if you don't like, but you have to.
So, Deb Hanson?
16 years, correct?
A little bit more. I joined in for, right after 9/11.
No kidding?
So, that's why.
Was that the impetus that you wanted to...
Yeah.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Wow. And you've seen a lot.
Not as much as these guys have, but...
Well, I mean, look at these guys.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I like the events.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Now, we've heard some commentary regarding sometimes people get a little testy, as it were.
Mm-hmm.
Does it depend on the event, the heat, the weather, just...
It varies.
Yeah.
You know, if they can't get to church, it's a problem. You just tell them a different way to go, which they're not used to, and they seem to, you know, drive off.
Do people recognize you?
Um, not...
They've seen your time and time again, it's like, oh, it's new.
Sometimes they do, yes.
Yeah, I bet.
Yes. But, yeah, I like it.
I bet.
Mm-hmm.
And if I may be so bold to ask, what would your message be to other women who are perhaps considering this field, whether it be temporary or...
Um, just get out there and do it.
That's really, you have to get out there and do it to truly...
Right. To experience it.
Now, is everybody on duty for Festival of the Vibe?
No.
Oof.
We're off.
And you had a heck of a weekend at the Concorde de l'Elegance, that was a...
That was rough. That didn't happen.
Didn't happen, yeah.
Yeah.
So, hanging out with that guy, he used to take the calls and leave.
Well, we've been married 16 years.
Oh, so, did you meet?
Yes, we met through...
Okay, hold on. You got your pen ready?
Right here.
Okay. So you met while serving together?
More or less, through Dale.
Jeez, Dale.
Dale recruited me to come and do the EMA and Jim was divorced and I was divorced and he kept setting us up to go out on calls and that and we hit it often.
When we had that citywide drill...
I, yeah, I remember that.
Citywide drill, put those two together and head out west.
Thank you, Dale, for those...
I can see the theater production now.
That was really cool.
Yeah.
We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Antonori, you had asked me for some moments here to...
Please.
Provide some commentary regarding...
I want to thank the team that's here and the rest of the team for all their volunteer hours. I know it's, doesn't pay much, but the service to the community, both to the police and fires, is immeasurable. In fact, we're undergoing a campaign right now to get more volunteers.
Yes.
We've gotten about 18 people interested.
Oh, no kidding?
I'm gonna...
Excellent.
Some of them have returned applications, some of them not, so we're gonna be tracking that down and hopefully we'll be adding to our team. Not to say that anybody's leaving soon, but people are starting to make noises about maybe 40 years isn't long enough.
But we do thank them. I was a senior in high school, Jim, when you joined.
You know, our team, our team is...
Sorry to hear that.
Three different, three different major activities. One is the scheduled events that we've talked about. One is call-outs for traffic accidents, larger fires, larger incidents where we need help. And then the third is planning for emergencies and manning the EOC and...
Sure.
...planning for the ultimate that we hope not to have. So having a strong team is very valuable. But I do want to invite Mr. Hanson back up to the podium here. Now, the paperwork is interesting, his file is old.
This is a certificate in teletype, Jim, so enjoy this, this is...
The official paperwork says he started in 1982, but apparently there was a few years before that that wasn't documented properly. So we are here to honor Jim for his 40 years of service.
Wow.
And I would like to read this to the, to the council, presented to Jim Hanson, excuse me. For 40 years of dedicated service to the city of Geneva Emergency Management Agency 2022, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Any objection, Jim, if I tweet and Instagram this out? I can cut off the chief if you'd like.
Feel free.
Feel free.
So...
11 followers now, so it's pretty exciting.
But again, we couldn't do our jobs without volunteers.
No question.
And hopefully we will add more to our team and be successful in the future years to come, so...
I'm sure you speak for Chief Passerelli as well.
Absolutely.
There's gotta be a level of reassurance, knowing that there's an additional team to...
Yeah, I mean, Dale and I talk a lot during storms, sometimes calm, sometimes all, and we also talk during incidents. He comes out on all general alarm fires, he also responds when the police need help. If they have a large traffic accident that's gonna require the road being shut down for many hours, it frees up the officers to...
Sure.
...do other things.
Exactly.
We have recently equipped them with a more modern fleet of vehicles, thanks to Public Works, used ones.
So you're no longer driving those Chevy Chevets?
They were driving the police cars that couldn't really drive anymore, so they've got...
I think it was Wally Malone's car.
Yeah.
I think it was...
Very well could be. So added some equipment and things and we'll continue to proceed forward with Dale's and the team's leadership, so thank you for this evening and the proclamation.
Well, we have a proclamation, ladies and gentlemen, to declare September 6th through the 10th as Geneva Emergency Management Agency Week. I would entertain a motion to so do, to do so. Mr. Marx, seconded by Mr. Kilburg, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And may I present this to all of you? And we'll get some photo ops and we can get free ice cream at somewhere. Dinner at the Mill Race. Sorry.
Yeah, it actually...
I heard you, Rob.
Oh, sorry.
Dale, we're coming with this, chief, but give them the requirements for what you're serving.
Sure.
Yeah, you want to stay here?
Sure.
You got the mic and all this?
No problem.
That should not do it, I'm sorry.
I just want to hear somebody say hello.
I was gonna 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 hear somebody say hello.
I was asked to talk about the requirements for joining the group. You have to be eighteen years or older, a valid driver's license. And we do all the training in-house, storm watching, traffic directing, uh, crowd control and stuff like that. You come out, you're always with a senior personnel, not by yourself, for safety. And, um, I always ask people that join, would you go sit in the middle of Route thirty-eight and Kirk Road and direct traffic? Ninety-nine percent of them say, no way. That's what I want to hear. I don't even like to do it, but, um, we're willing to take anybody, male, female, anybody. Uh, as long as they pass the requirements and fill out the application and I'm glad to hear that the response is.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Real good and hopefully we can, next year at this time, we'll have many more individuals. And I'd like to thank the chamber for taking the time and doing this and definitely Mr. Kilburg for getting this set up. I really appreciate it.
And we know Alderwoman Ruby couldn't be with us tonight, but I know she sends her applause and appreciation.
Yes.
So.
Alrighty.
We're proud of you, Dale. We're proud of the entire team. We thank you very much. We appreciate you. And as luck would have it, get the heck out of here. We got more stuff to do, so go enjoy your night. Thanks, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, we now have the pleasure of meeting a couple of our new teammates. They are from Public Works. First, I'd like to introduce Sarah Finch. Sarah, come on up. Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent of Water.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Good to see you. Do you want to adjust that microphone? This is being broadcast on the web and we currently have three, three people watching, so.
Great. Well, I didn't tell my family I was here tonight.
Did you tell your family or no? Why not?
Nope.
Well, they can watch it rebroadcast, of course.
We're not telling them that.
Oh, yes, we are. Yes, we are. Someone get a picture of her talking. We'll be sure to tweet that out. Now, I'm gonna read from your biography that you created.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's not, it's not fiction. This is fact.
Facts, yes.
I moved to Geneva when I was thirteen, from New York and Florida. How the heck did you do that?
Well.
Wasn't it one of the two states?
It was both essentially.
Really?
At different points, yes.
Were you on the run, Sarah?
I was not, no.
Now, check this out, folks, if you don't know. Went to Geneva Middle School South. Southeast.
South side.
South side. And Geneva High School?
Yep.
Before working at Public Works, Sarah worked for the Geneva Middle School South as a Special Education Assistant in eighth grade.
Yes.
Extraordinarily rewarding work.
I loved it, yeah.
Unbelievable.
It was great.
Coach, seventh and eighth grade cheerleading.
Yes.
How was that?
Better than I thought it was gonna be.
So the, the question is then, did you raise your hand to volunteer to coach or it says, hey, let's call Finch and have her do it?
Essentially, that was it. It was like nobody else is, uh, raising their hand to do it. And I wanted to get the play position, so it was kind of a package deal.
Ah, and that, cause it says next year, and produce the Spring Musical.
Yes.
So theater is your passion.
That's just what I enjoy more than sports, but I enjoyed cheerleading a lot.
That's a good way to cover yourself there.
I did. It's true.
Sarah is excited to continue to serve Geneva community in a different way with my new position at Public Works. So far, so good?
Yes.
And when did you join us?
Uh, June twentieth.
Wow, right in the heart of it all, right in the, before everything. Swedish days and all that fun stuff.
Yes.
Lot of calls during Swedish days, huh?
Actually, it wasn't that bad.
Well, you have to actually pick up the phone. You don't just.
True. I, maybe I forgot about that at that point.
That's why we can never get ahold of Van Gasken. Don't tell him we said that.
I won't tell him.
You enjoy spending my, your free time in downtown Geneva shopping and hanging out with local restaurants and friends?
Yes.
That's cool.
Yeah.
And you have a friend here tonight. Do you want to introduce your?
Uh, my fiance is here.
Fiance, yes.
Um, his name's Chris Horton. He also is a Geneva alum. He actually has lived here longer.
Chris, welcome. June of twenty twenty-three is the wedding?
Yes.
They're having the party and the ceremony at Riverside?
Yes.
What, what, just curious, what time do things begin?
Around after fourth, after four thirty.
After four thirty? No kidding?
Yeah.
So the, and the ceremony is gonna be at Riverside as well?
Yeah.
Wow, who's hosting the ceremony? Who's, who's presiding?
Um, we haven't officially asked the person, but, um, my aunt. Maybe it will be you. You're offering, okay.
I just met Chris, not a big fan. Horton, when did you graduate Geneva High School? Twenty-ten?
Yes. Older than me.
Thank you for.
No problem.
Much older than you.
Two years.
Two years. That'll do it. So life at Public Works, it, it's, it's a different world, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Fascinating place to be.
Very fascinating.
What do you like most about it?
I think that I like interacting with the community members. So far, it's been pretty entertaining, um.
You know this is being broadcast live, right?
Yeah, it, the things people call about are very interesting.
Any, any particular addresses and street names you'd like to identify?
Uh, no.
Okay, good. What's the, what's the, what, what surprises you most? I mean, it's a fascinating field, though, is it not?
Um, it is. I think the thing that surprised me the most was, um, why we don't use a lot of salt on the roads. But do you want me to elaborate?
I, I'm gonna challenge you, yes. Why, why don't we?
Well, I did learn that, um, I don't know if it's EPA, Bob's gonna yell at me tomorrow, but they regulate how much, uh, like, salt is distributed into the river. Um, so we can't use a lot on our roads for that reason.
And it's pretty cool, as you well know, that some of your teammates, veterans of the department, created their own.
Chemical?
Chemical and mechanics to help distribute the pre-melt, which is pretty cool, isn't it?
It was pretty exciting to see the salt dome thing.
Yeah, yeah, they've gotten the salt storage award for many, many years.
Really?
Oh, yeah. You should volunteer to ride in one of the trucks. You can do that.
I hope I get a chance.
Yeah.
But I don't want to go very far.
Oh, well, go ahead and ask for your specifications now, so.
Just, just a couple streets.
Why don't we just deliver this video to your parents' house?
Nope.
No?
They're never gonna know.
Do your parents get snowplow first?
No. They live in Mill Creek.
Oh, heck, yeah, they don't know. That's awesome.
So I actually don't know.
Is Mill Creek part of the city?
No.
Do you get calls about that often?
Yes.
How often?
Often, especially in my first week.
I think people were just teasing you.
I think it was a test.
I think it was, cause I called four times.
It was, yeah.
What else do you want to share with us? I mean, you've had a fascinating trajectory here.
I didn't know what's, how much to write or.
Oh, no, no, I think it's wonderful, wonderful, but from education and here, it's, it's really cool.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
Absolutely.
So I'm glad you're enjoying yourself.
Yes.
Anyone on the dais have any questions or comments for Sarah? Again, the time of four thirty on June of twenty twenty-three?
Yep.
What's the actual date?
June sixteenth.
June sixteenth?
Yep, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, we will put on additional GMA people and police officers, so.
Yeah. Hopefully, there's not big road construction that day.
Anything else we can do for you? You Mill Creek people have a lot of requests, man. Chris, anything you want to add? I like that guy.
Me too.
We're delighted you're with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, Cam, Cam Zabel. Formal name is Cameron, but you prefer Cam, as you indicated, right?
As long as you're close.
And you have someone with you tonight as well? You'd like to introduce your girlfriend?
Yeah, that's my girlfriend, Veronica. We've been dating for about nine years, so.
Nine years, fantastic, man.
Yeah.
Welcome, Veronica. Now, I think I, oh, gosh, you make your home, is it Downers? No, Elmer's.
Elmer's, yeah.
Both at Elmer's and sometimes you take the train in.
Yeah.
That's, who picks you up with the train?
Myself. I bought one of those electric scooters.
No, you did not.
I did.
No kidding?
Yeah.
You know those are legal in Geneva?
Not, not now, I don't. Now I do.
Born and raised in Elmer's.
Yeah.
You're a GIS technician.
Yeah.
What does GIS stand for?
Geographic Information Systems. Yeah, so.
The clerk and I still use folding maps.
A lot of people do. They get a lot of requests for it, so people don't like being dragged into the digital age, so.
Thank you for singling us out.
No, no, you're good. It's not just you guys. I can go through the whole Public Works who still wants the paper maps if you want.
Oh, I can imagine.
Yeah.
I can imagine. Went to College of DuPage and Arizona State University where you graduated with a degree in geography and certificate of GIS.
Yeah.
COD is a cool school.
I love COD.
Isn't it great?
It's like, I wish I could go back, but it's not the time.
I believe that's the biggest junior, biggest junior college in America, correct?
Yeah, I was late to a lot of classes, cause I had to get across it and like it was enormous, so I believe that.
Well, that doesn't lead into your excuse, I was just saying.
I mean, I, it helped. It worked at the time.
Arizona State, why there?
Uh, cause I worked for Starbucks and they paid for it, so.
No kidding?
Yeah, so.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Wow. What's your favorite coffee drink?
I just drink black coffee.
Yeah, see, that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
Life is good. Do you drink coffee all day at work?
No. Otherwise, no. I don't drink the coffee they have at work. It's not, it's not very good, so I bring, I bring some from home.
Abaca?
Yeah.
Now, before working at Geneva, Cam, you had worked at Kendall County, Illinois and had internships at Argonne National Laboratory.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah.
And the city of Berwin.
Yes.
Which is home to?
Svengouli.
Bingo. See, you're the only guy who knows this and I'm impressed.
Oh, man.
Who remembers Svengouli on Channel thirty-two? See?
It's still on.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it's on, uh, yeah, it's on twenty-six now, I think.
Oh, it's on twenty-six, CW, whatever it's called?
Yeah.
Svengouli, good lord, man.
Yeah.
So Argonne.
Yes.
That's a cool place.
Yeah, it's kind of weird, but it's cool, so, um.
Do you know that, uh, Caven works at Argonne? He called it weird.
He'll, he'll agree. He should agree, if he's been there.
I'm just a spectator here today. I, that, that is, that is not where I work at. Caven created cold fusion.
Ah, yes. I was on the warm fusion team.
Were you on the warm fusion team?
Competing, it was.
Did you work remotely at Argonne or did you have to go in?
No, I had to go in. They had to search my car every morning.
Yeah, oh, it's intense, isn't it?
Yeah, and, you know, so, yeah, we, I was working for, um, the National Nuclear Security Agency, so.
So you have, you have clearance?
No. I got to do like the boring, no clearance work. Like I had to go through databases and find typos and stuff. It sounds cooler than what I actually did. Like I tell people where I worked, they thought it was cool, and then if I explain the job, it's horribly boring.
Yeah, but why, why explain it? You know, it's like, it's cool, man, it's like.
Well, I'll tell the truth here, cause I assume I'm under oath or something along those lines, but you know, if I'm out at a bar, I'll play it up a little bit.
No, but you're on cable access.
Yeah, I don't want to lie to the three or four people on Facebook Live, so.
You chose to work in Geneva because I really enjoyed working at a municipal level and I like the responsibility of my job, including being able to do field work and to work with infrastructure.
Yeah. I think it's interesting.
We have a lot of field work to do, don't we?
Yes, we do, um.
It's not uncommon for a community our age, though.
No, if you ever see a guy out with an antenna, that's me in the middle of the road.
Where is the antenna, Cam?
It's, it's big. I have to carry it around. It's like the size of their flagpole and.
And what are you doing with that thing?
Getting stuff on maps, so it's accurate, so.
Have you discovered stuff that we thought, oh, good lord, we had no idea it was there?
Yes. Yeah, I've done a lot of like, in like prairie areas, I found manholes that we forgot about or didn't think existed, stuff like that, so. Yeah, it's like a treasure hunt, except like the treasures, sanitary pipes, so.
Have you found where the finance office is yet?
No, no.
Good luck. That's cool. This is all on TV, just so you know.
Oh, yeah.
Some of my hobbies include, this is a joke, making coffee.
Yeah.
You don't drink it?
No, I make coffee and drink it, too.
At work?
But I, no, no, I do it in the morning. It's too stressful at work. I don't want like everybody coming in and asking for it. Like the stuff I, it's kind of expensive. I can't share.
Well, we're glad you're a generous soul. Thanks.
You know, I try.
And going on hikes and watching movies. Define hikes.
It's like going to like the parks around here.
Anywhere and everywhere.
Yeah, wherever.
Wow. Do you know that ninety-three percent of all Americans live within ten minutes of a park?
I do now.
Isn't that fascinating? And in those parks, electric scooters are illegal.
I know. But that's, that was a business expense for the IRS, in case they're curious.
Watching movies. What's your genre?
I'll watch whatever, as long as it's good, um.
Well, you don't know it's good until it's over.
No, but you can kind of tell sometimes, but I, I like, like older dramas or just anything that's good.
What's the best movie you've seen lately?
I really liked, I saw the movie Belfast recently. That was pretty good.
I hear that's good.
It was, I, it was enjoyable. I thought it did a good job.
Is it long?
It's paced well, so it didn't really drag on. I didn't know a whole lot about the troubles in Ireland and I think it did a good job showing it from like a personal level.
Isn't that funny how they use that term, the troubles?
I know, it's so British. They just completely underscore what it actually was.
Yeah, it's amazing. You also enjoy learning about other countries, histories and cultures.
Yeah.
Are you well, are you a well-traveled man?
I wish.
Yeah.
Anthony Bourdain does the traveling for me. I just watch, watch him and.
There you go.
Stuff like that. But I'd like to travel more, but I just, yeah.
Well, you've been to Berwin, I mean.
Yeah, Berwin's its own magical place. Three point two square miles of fun.
Good lord, man. Holy moly. So what are you doing tonight after the meeting?
Going home, going to bed and getting ready to come back here at seven AM.
Take tomorrow off.
All right.
Be here at six.
Heard you liked it.
And what's your advice to other folks who think, this is a career? What is this, what, what do you do?
It's one of those jobs that people don't realize what you do until the map is wrong or the map's not working.
I bet.
But like if I do everything right, no one really notices it. Um, it's a fun job. It's like a little bit of programming, a little bit of like artistry and making actual print maps and then just a lot of problem solving with interesting problems and you get to play detective sometimes and sometimes you get to, you know, people want maps made and it gets really difficult, but in a fun way.
That's pretty cool. Any questions or comments from the dais? We're delighted you're with us. You've been with us since October.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but it's our first chance to actually connect.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're happy that you're on board and we appreciate your work.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Item three C, folks, is a presentation by the Geneva Police and Firefighters Pensions Actuarial Reports. Good night, guys. Horton, good to see you, man. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. If I had known I was gonna be following all this good stuff, I probably would have deferred to another meeting, but.
I have a biography of you, too. Here goes.
Um, so I'm here this evening to talk about the May first, uh, twenty twenty-two actuarial evaluations for the police officers and firefighters pension fund. Um, so as you might expect, there, given what's happened in the market during, you know, the first half of twenty twenty-two, you know, the results for, for this year's actuarial evaluations were not as, as favorable as we would have liked. Um, and, but there's really a, a couple different things. The, the market, the, the returns, I think, were minus five and a half and minus seven and a half percent for the year that ended on April thirtieth of, of twenty twenty-two. Um, but we were following, following a really strong year. Last year, we had about thirty percent for both plans. The year before that, we had negative, you know, seven or eight percent. So it's, it's been an every other year, uh, thing where it's a good year, bad, or bad year, good year, bad year. So we do smooth investment gains and losses over a five-year period, so that helps, uh, keep some of the, uh, you know, the volatility out of the contribution requirement. Um, I mentioned there was a couple things that changed this year. One was the, the, the poor performance from the assets. The other is that we changed several assumptions. So the, the contribution requirement for both plans went up by about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for each plan. Um, the, the market contributed about sixty or seventy thousand for, for both plans. Um, like I said, there's some smoothing that, that went on, so it doesn't, you know, the increase because of the poor performance, you know, wasn't, you know, overwhelming this year. But for both plans, there was an additional one hundred thousand dollars of increase that was really attributable to changes in actuarial assumptions. So there's, there's, we've been talking about this for, for several years now, but the Illinois pension ramp, as we've all heard, is, you know, is, uh, is how these plans have been funded historically, where the contributions start small and then they increase over time. And, and so one of the things that, one of the assumptions that we changed was to lower our payroll growth assumption. And by lowering our payroll growth assumption, you take a lot of steepness out of your, out of your contribution increases, but in order to meet those, those obligations, it requires a higher contribution today. So your contributions are lower in the future, but they're higher today. And, and that's really the, the main, uh, main driver of, of the assumption change, or of the increase to the contribution because of the assumption changes. Um, we lowered that assumption from four percent to three and a half percent. Um, and as I said, by doing that, we, we increase our, our current contribution. The other assumptions that we changed were as a result of the, the pension consolidation that is going on. So both of the consolidated plans performed what's called an experience study where they, you know, they look at all the experience from all of the plans across the state and then they, they compare those, that experience to the assumptions that were in place, have been in, uh, place since the last experience study that was completed by the Department of Insurance in, in twenty seventeen. And then they make adjustments, um, to, to the, um, to the assumptions based on that, that new experience that's happened, you know, over the last five years. And, and so there were new, you know, there, you know, we adopted a slightly different mortality table than what we'd using, had been using. For the most part, it's, it's the same table. Uh, there's just, uh, some minor tweaks, uh, factors that, that are included in the table now. Uh, there were new retirement tables, uh, new disability tables, new termination rates that were, were implemented, and then new, new salary increases. Um, so a lot of these assumptions, assumptions offset each other, so, so the impact of most of these assumptions was not that substantial. But when you factor in that, that fifty basis point reduction, um, to our contribu, our, to our payroll growth assumption, our contribution did go up, like I said, around an additional one hundred thousand dollars for, for each plan. Um, in terms of the, the, uh, unfunded liability and the, the funded ratio, for, for the police plan, we had about eight, almost eighteen point nine million dollars of unfunded liability last year. After all was said and done, we end up with eighteen point nine million dollars of unfunded liability this year. So there really was no change to our, um, unfunded liability. Our funded ratio did go from sixty percent to sixty-one point seven percent. Um, so there was, like I said, for the police plan, there was no real increase to our unfunded liability. Our funded ratio did go up, but since we took a lot of that backloading out that had been inherent in your contribution funding policy, that's why we saw that increase to the, to the, uh, contribution requirement. From a fire plan perspective, the unfunded liability did go up, uh, from seven point two to about eight point eight. And our, our funded ratio went from seventy-one point one to sixty-eight point three. Um, so there was a little bit of, of increase to your unfunded liability for that plan and your funded ratio. So there was a little bit of, of increase to your unfunded liability for that plan, and your funded ratio did go down a, a little bit. But again, you know, those really the two factors, the, the poor performance by the market and that assumption change, specifically that payroll growth assumption, that are really driving, driving the increase this year. In terms of the consolidation, I believe both of your funds have transferred all of their assets from being managed locally to being managed by the consolidated fund, so now they are part of asset pools that are around $8 billion and $10 billion. So the, you know, one of the main objectives of this is to lower expenses and having a $8 billion asset pool versus, you know, having what, you know, 40 or, you know, 30 or $40 million in your specific funds. You know, we really expect that the unfund-, the, the investment expenses will be much lower going forward than what they have been historically. Additionally, these new funds will be able to invest in things like private equity and, and those sorts of things that have, have, you know, they won't put 20 or 30% in these, these objective, or in some of these asset classes, but they will have 5% maybe in, in some of these asset classes that will be able to generate larger investment returns going forward. So the consolidation of, of the assets is, is complete for the fire plan. For the police plan, as I mentioned, your, your fund has been transferred, but they are still in the process of, of bringing, you know, consolidating all of the plans. The police fund is a little bit behind the fire plan in terms of getting the assets from all 360 plans, you know, that are across the state. So with that, I'll open it up to, to questions to, to make sure, you know, I want to make sure you have, you know, all the information that you need to go forward.
Thank you again. Questions or comments from the dais? Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that the consolidation of the police pension has not occurred yet or is in the process, and the fire is complete. Is that why there is a difference in the footnotes? In the footnotes of the two, for the police, it has an allocation of the different types of assets, and in the fire, it says that the best estimates are unknown. And it's unknown if they're any greater than 5%, so I wondered if that would explain that difference.
So are you, you're talking about the, the GASB information?
The Support for Long-Term Expected Rate of Return.
Yes, so the, part of the, well, part of it is that the, the timing of the police consolidation was a little bit later. Was that in June? Is that, yes. So as of the end of our fiscal year, you know, we still had access to all of the information, you know, for, for the police plan, because it was still managed locally. For the fire, for the fire plan, it was transferred at the very beginning of the year, and so at the time of, of the, at the end of your fiscal year, you know, we didn't necess-, we don't, we didn't necessarily have access to all of the same information that, that we've collected in, in the past, just because it was, it hadn't, wasn't being provided. So we, we did have to change our, you know, some of the things that we disclose in our report, just because the information isn't, wasn't as, as available as it has been when things have been managed locally. I know the reporting requirements, Reed and I were talking about this before, they are, they're, they're much lower than they hope to be. Obviously, these are still new funds. They're still working through, through all the kinks, and the reporting has been a little bit slow, but we expect that to, to get better as things, as they, as they become more of a well-oiled machine, I guess you could say.
Okay, so, so you're not anticipating having unknowns in there going forward, but at this point in time?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, and some of, yes, some of it is, you know, just the, the timing of, of the consolidation and where the assets were and what information was available at the time we needed to present the reports.
Okay. In both funds, there was a new item this year called contributions buyback, both in the police fund and the fire fund, and I didn't see that before and was just wondering if you could explain what that is.
Yeah, so you're, you're talking about in the reconciliations of, of the assets?
Well, and it's also in the, the components of pension expense.
Yes, so what the buyback calculations are is, is when a, a police officer, because this wouldn't, this wouldn't be the case in the fireside. I assume you're looking at the, the police fund. But when there is a, we'll say a mid-career hire, for example, let's say someone was, was working in, in Elmhurst, and they decided that they wanted to come, come work in Geneva, and they have 10 years of service. They are able to transfer that service from Elmhurst to Geneva and then have that 10 years count towards their retirement. And, and so what happens when that process occurs, and during that process, is an actuarial calculation is done saying, okay, what, what's the unfunded liability of the Geneva Police Fund the day this person, you know, as of today, and when they have zero service? And then we do a calculation and say, okay, if we add that 10 years of service, what's the new unfunded liability? And let's say the unfunded liability goes up by $200,000. Well, what happens is the, Elmhurst has to transfer the member contributions with interest, and they have to match it. So let's say member contributions with interest is $60,000. They have to send $120,000 over to your fund to transfer that service. And there's still that $80,000 shortfall, the difference between the 200 and the 120. The member has to contribute to the plan that difference. And so those addition, those contributions that are going into the plan, they're not normal member contributions. They're not the normal 9.91%. So they are accounted for differently. They're called the, the buyback or true cost contributions in order to, to, to make that transfer official.
Okay, I, I understand. And both, both funds did have that, both fire and, and police this year. There was an assumption change of the interest rate from 7.25 to 7, which, for the return on investments. And I was wondering if that is in line with other pension plans that you see out there?
Yeah, the, let's see here. Didn't, the, the change for the investment return assumption happened in last year's valuation, not this year's.
Okay, so we maintained it at 7?
Yes, you maintained it at 7%. So the average of the 130 largest public pension funds in the country, the average interest rate assumption is 6.99%. So that's, you know, in line with your 7%. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's right or, or wrong. I mean, those plans might be invested completely different than, than your plan, but in, in terms of the 7%, the, I would say the average for a police and, and fire plan in the state before this year was probably 6.75. I would probably say that was the most common assumption. That was probably, you know, probably the median and mean. The, but that was before consolidation. With the consolidation, as I mentioned previously, there's opportunities to get a larger investment return based on lower expenses and, and more, you know, opportunities. The fire fund has adopted a rate that they, for their, for their actuarial valuation of 7.125%, so 7 and an eighth. The police fund has yet to adopt an assumption. They're still debating it because they need a, a super majority, so they need six votes, and they have yet to get six votes on any particular assumption, but I expect that the police will be somewhere between 6.75 and, and 7%. So at least the, you know, I, I guess that's a long-winded way of saying that your assumption is definitely in, in line with, with what we're seeing elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. And, and my final question is just if you could tell us what you think drove the increase in the unfunded portion of the fire fund from 7.2 to 8.8, whereas police stayed constant? So what, what is, what are the factors that changed fire much more than police?
Yeah, so the, about 300,000 of it was due to the investment return, the invest-, the smooth investment return being less than what we were expecting. So that was the, that was the biggest factor. Salary increases were actually higher than what we anticipated. Our assumption was, my pages got messed up, was 6.93, or sorry. Our weighted assumption was 5.58, but the actual increases was 6.93. So that contributed another $200,000 to, to the, to the assumption, to the, the increase in the unfunded liability. The inactive mortality was about 84,000, and then another bucket, just a lot of random things, was about 200,000. And then the assumption change did increase the unfunded liability by about 847,000. So in total, the assumptions were 847, and the, the loss due to those other things that I mentioned was about 650.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I won't delve into more minutia, so I think, I think we're losing the audience, so thank you.
Any, any other questions? Yes, sir?
I had one, as it relates to the, the shift as far as the, the management of the funds within the fire portion. We have a Board of Trustees, five members. Two members from the municipality, two firefighters, and one retired firefighter. What, what's, I guess the question is, what is the impact on the role of the trustees then really if they're not involved as they had previously been in the management, management of those, those funds?
Yes.
I mean, essentially, it's been transferred. It's no longer local. And, and is it, does that, does that Board of Trustees still serve a purpose, and what does that include?
Yes, so there are many things that the Board of Trustees, the local Board of Trustees, you know, that they do. One of the things historically has been to manage the, the investments. That part of their responsibility has been shifted. It's been transferred to the, the state.
And the police will be doing the same?
Yes, they, they've transferred their investments a, as well. So, but, but all of the other things that they, they have done have not changed. So the, the management of, of the fund. So for example, if there's a claim for in-line of duty, in-line of duty disability, for example, they still have, that, that board still has that hearing. You know, they're still responsible for, you know, making sure that everybody's paid the right amounts and that every, that all of the, the payments are started at the, at the, at the proper time. So the, the investments was a big portion of their responsibilities, and, and that's gone, but they still, there still are a lot of other responsibilities that, that they have maintained, because the, it's, 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 the consolidated fund is, it's called the Pension Investment Fund, so they just focus on the investments. They have nothing to do with the administration of the plan.
I assume that was the case. I think it's, it's, it's good that the city and those that might be watching this evening understand that as well, that, that Board of Trustees still serves a purpose and an important purpose with those other responsibilities that you've outlined. So, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? If not, there's no action to be taken tonight. Simply a, a thanks for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you again. Item 3D, folks, is to consider approval of special event application from Geneva High School for Homecoming Parade Street Lane closures, September 23rd, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Bruno makes the motion. Ms. Burghart makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure, so I'm going to actually combine D and E as they're both related.
Okay.
And typical of what we do, although this is the first time we've actually done it for the Homecoming Parade, but first you have the special event application, which would approve their event along with city services. And the second is the resolution that I dot requires to close State Street for the parade. So we're just trying to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
Any questions, any comments? Is there anyone with us from the high school? I don't think so. Item D, we have a motion. We have a second. Because there are street lane closures, I would recommend a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 3D has been approved. Item 3E, as stated earlier, is related to item D. Approved Resolution Number 2022-J-78. Request enclosure of traffic lanes on State Route 38 for the Geneva High School Homecoming Parade, September 23rd, 2022. Mr. Kassarog makes the motion, seconded by Ms. Mayor. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 3E has been approved. Dean, who do we play on Homecoming? Do you know? God, it's like
St. Charles North.
St. Charles North?
Yes.
Really?
Yep.
There you go.
There you go.
It's going to be a barn burner. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be both considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Ms. Mayor makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Marx. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved. We jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
The bills for payment are $1,438,594.93.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Mr. Bruno makes the motion, as he always does, to approve the bills as presented, which are available in our packet and on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Burghart makes the second. Any questions regarding any of the bills? All of you received correspondence today regarding some of the questions. Madam Clerk, you're up.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. The bills have been paid. We skip to item 12, folks. 12A is Consider Approval of Ordinance Number 2022-J-38. Amending Title 11, Zonings, Section 11-2-2, Definition of Words and Terms, Section 11-3-5, Fences and Walls, and Chapter 15, Zoning Illustrations, all related to the regulation of fences. Is there a motion to put this matter on the floor? Mr. Kilburg makes that motion, and seconded by Ms. Mayor, Ms. Dawkins.
So actually, I'm going to turn the floor over to Director DeGroot, who is going to provide a, a brief summary of the item.
Excellent. Hello, David.
Hello.
David, curious minds want to know what happened?
Broke my hand.
Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate that.
I tripped in the garage and smacked it on the table saw, and that's the result. And I have no room to operate my mouse here because of that.
Would you like someone to assist?
I think I, once I get it going, I'll be okay.
The table saw wasn't running, was it?
No, and you know, it hadn't been in that location either. I had just moved it there, you know, a couple days earlier, and when I went back, there it was, so.
Imagine that.
I thought, you know, I won't go through as much as we did a few weeks ago, but I thought it'd be easy to kind of digest the amendments with a brief presentation. So back in June, we held a policy discussion regarding the regulation of fences. The topic was brought forward for discussion because staff and older persons had received a lot of inquiries from residents wanting to have taller fences in the, in the street yard. for, to be four feet on corner lots only when a swimming pool is present. And we also talked about clarifying the allowable height of fences on the rear yard of through lots, lots that have frontages on two streets. Then we also talked a bit about opacity requirements for fences located in the street yard. But ultimately, the committee directed staff to draft amendments that would create a distinction between the corner street yard and the front street yard. Currently, we just have one definition for street yard. To allow fence height of four feet in that corner street yard, provided that, that corner street yard does not abut the front yard of a neighboring property. To allow a fence height of six feet in the rear yard of a through lot, again, provided that, that yard does not abut the front yard of a neighboring property. And then to establish opacity requirements for fences located in the street yards. We didn't really have consensus at the time whether or not those requirements should be established, but I think we were directed to draft them for consideration by the commission and the council. So we did that, and we presented it to the commission back in August, August 25th. And for the most part, they, they recommended unanimously to adopt the amendments as proposed with a few recommendations. Those were kind of called out in the sidebar of your report and the packet, but I'll also touch on those as we go through. And if we could just, if there are questions, just hold them to the end, because I think the next slide might answer some of the ones that come up. The first proposed amendment is to make a distinction between a front street yard and a corner street yard. Again, the committee was supportive of allowing a allowable fence height of four feet in the corner street yard, but not the front. Doing so would provide more flexibility for corner lots, privacy, and eliminate the conflict we have with our swimming pool and spot code and the zoning ordinance. So to make that distinction, we're proposing new definitions for corner street yard and front street yard. We're also proposing to amend the illustration that's currently in Section 11153 and replace it with the one shown here. Um, sorry. I seem to be stuck on this slide. Still not moving. There we go. Okay. So the desire to allow fences in the corner street yard to have a height of four feet requires an amendment to Section 1135C. Again, the committee recommended that this only be allowed in the corner street yard that does not abut the front street yard of a neighboring property. So that is, that is noted with an asterisk, the note and the exception shown here. And this is one of the, the changes the commission recommended, the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were not as concerned with allowing a four-foot fence next to a 42-inch fence, provided that the open fence requirements that are proposed are established. So their recommendation was to allow four feet in the corner street yard in all cases for residential properties. The committee, the whole, wanted to clarify that fences located in the rear yard of a through lot are not considered obstructions, so that's what's shown here in the red font on the definition of a through lot. We've also proposed an illustration that helps clarify the allowable height in those yards, which we'll get to in a minute. Number 10 here inserts requirements for open fences in the street yards. Again, we'll review that in, in a minute. The commission wanted to include, the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to include language here that restricted or prohibited chain link fences from being an open fence in the street yard. Main reasons were aesthetics, long-term maintenance of chain link fences. So I want to get to the illustration that kind of shows where the proposed fence heights would be allowed. So we proposed, proposed to add this illustration to 111520. The illustration has four examples. And number one, the maximum height of the fence is 42 inches because that rear yard, I can't see my mouse here, that rear yard is adjacent to the front street yard of a neighboring property. And number two, the fence height would be allowed to be the maximum six feet because it's abutting another rear yard or a corner street yard. And number three, the maximum height would be four feet for the corner street yard because it abuts the rear yard of another property. But number four, in a, in a corner street yard, that would be restricted to 42 inches because it abuts the front street yard of a neighboring property. And number two, the fence height would be allowed to be the maximum six feet because it's abutting another rear yard or a corner street yard. And number three, the maximum height would be four feet for the corner street yard because it abuts the rear yard of another property. But number four, in a, in a corner street yard, that would be restricted to 42 inches because it abuts the front street yard of a neighboring property. And if we went with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, that illustration would need to be modified. Further clarification is added for number one, which would restrict the fence height to four feet in that front yard portion, abutting of the abutting property. And then it could go to six feet beyond that. And then the, the other change would be to number four, even though it's located next to a front street yard, that corner street yard would be allowed to have a maximum height of four feet. Again, they were comfortable with that, provided that the open fence regulations were established. So that, that's the final component. Again, there wasn't consensus on whether or not these should be established, but the Planning and Zoning Commission were comfortable with them as presented. We modeled this after the city of Naperville. We're proposing to add a definition that would require at least 30% of the fence in a one-foot wide section to be open. And we're also proposing to add the illustration for clarification of what an open fence is. Does anybody see the arrow?
No. There it is.
Sorry, I'm still getting used to this. Okay. So the commission was supportive of establishing these requirements, but they wanted to make sure that the commonly available fences would meet this, this 30% standard. So we did review options at Home Depot, Menards, and Lowe's, and found that most picket-style fences have at least 33% open area. Here's an example from Home Depot, three-inch panels, 2.9-inch spacing, about 33%. An example from Menards, 3.75-inch panels and 3.75-inch spacing, again, about 33% open. Lowe's, another example, about three inches panels and three inch spacing. When we look at the, the requirements for the swimming pool and spot code, they do allow open fences that would meet this, the spacing requirement, but the, the vertical members can't be spaced more than four inches. So you could accomplish the required fence for a swimming pool and an open fence with this requirement. Finally, we reached out to Naperville to see if they had any issues with this, with this regulation, and as of tonight, we haven't received a response yet. That was kind of a quick run-through. I'm happy to go back through any of the slides and answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the dais. Mr. Swanson, Mr. Bruno, Mr. Maladra.
Thank you. Where, which fences would be required to be 30% open? We're adding that, it was number 10, residential has to be 30% open. Which ones would it relate to?
So, any fence in a front street yard or a corner street yard?
So in effect, we are making our fence rules more restrictive.
It would be more restrictive than we have now, yes.
Which, which I don't believe was the direction of the committee of the whole. And certainly on the opacity, I think we were pretty evenly divided, and, and, and so now we're saying, this is the way it's going to be, and it's going to be not only for the side fences, but it's going to be for all front fences as well.
I, I think we noted that there wasn't consensus and.
Understood, understood. So I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what, what we asked to be done and what was provided to us. I, at, at the close of the Cal, I thought we said, let's take a look at what the opacity requirements could be, not, let's change everything and make it a requirement. So I, I, I think that's a, a major distinction from what my interpretation of how the Cal ended was. So, so I, I guess I'm uncomfortable making our rules more restrictive. We, we were reacting to requests from the community saying, we're, we're losing our choices, it's more expensive, 42 inches is a difficult size, and we're responding by saying, you know what, 48 is fine, but we want you to put in the fence that we want you to put in. And your choices are now limited by that. So, so I, I philosophically have a problem with making that more restrictive, particularly in the front. I think we addressed the side issue, the corner lot, and then went around and, and made everything more restrictive. So I, I would propose stripping out that requirement for the open fencing. That's, that's my thought on it. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, Mr. Maladra, do you have a point of privilege? Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, I just thought that the actual, the way that it was written in the packet did not call for the front street yard to be changed. I thought it was just in regards to this side, the corner street yard is what was being addressed by the openness requirement.
It should, it should say the street yard, which would include both the corner and the front.
Oh, so it includes both. Yeah, so I think it should say corner street yard.
You had mentioned early on that you were consolidating those two words, corner and front, just to mean street yard.
Well, we, we already have a definition for street yard. So a corner street yard and a front street yard are the new definitions, which would encompass the street yard. So if we refer to street yard, we're referring to both front and corner.
Both, exactly, okay.
I, I think that's the way it was proposed, is that it would be all street yards.
Mr. Bruno, Mr. Maladra, then Ms. Mayor, we can come back to if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So this discussion came out of our petitioning for securing swimming pools and state regulations for, for 48 inches fencing around swimming pools. During our last conversation, we, we did seem to have consensus, I believe we did have consensus, that front yards, a street yard, should still be limited to 42 inches. Correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm, I'm, I'm good with all the reasoning on, on all of this. If you could go back, though, to the diagram of the new, yeah, that one. The corner street yard, if, if we were looking to cure a difficulty with swimming pools, that corner street yard, which in that diagram goes up to the middle of the house, if it, I don't know if you can point to it with, yeah, that goes up to the middle of the house there, which would allow 48 inches. Now, a lot of homes just have a rectangular footprint, so that would actually be all the way to the front of the house. So the ordinance as written would allow 48 inches in many locations up to the front facade of the, of the structure, but does nothing additional to advance security of the, of the pool. I would like to propose that, that corner street yard definition with 48-inch fence reference the rear facade of the primary structure. In fact, I would, I mean, I'll, I'll allow discussion, but I might, I'd make a motion later to do that, which I suppose pulling that back would just make front street yard go to the back of the structure also. I didn't, can you think of an intrinsic problem with that in terms of definitions or confusion with?
I, I know we, we struggled with definitions for a while. I tried to come up with one that was, we, we thought workable. I think the, we really didn't have this discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but on a staff level, we were looking at it, you know, the side yard on any of these lots starts at this point, and that's where you can go up to six feet. So we were kind of looking at treating the corner lots, you know, that's kind of where I think most people think the rear of their house starts is kind of at that, at that side point back, is the, is either the side or backyard, and increasing the height from that point backward.
Well, and, and I come back to the consensus on fences in the public realm, and we are, this is, we're talking all about fences in the public realm, not on a, an interior side yard, but, you know, neighbors across the street, you know, will see this. I, I would, I'd prefer that that definition limit that 48-inch fence to the, to the rear of the structure. And I'd be, and for what it's worth, I'm, I'm okay with the opacity discussion for, for street, for street-side fences. And I'll, if you'll allow me to chime in later, I'm, I'll, I'll enter. I'd be curious to hear other thoughts on that, that change of definition. Thanks.
Mr. Maladra, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm not, sorry, I'm not sure I understand all of this stuff. So, first question, so the house, second from the right on the bottom, front, what does that say, front? That guy, yeah, front something yard?
Front street yard.
What can he put in his front street yard?
42 inches.
42 inches. What can the guy put in his corner street yard?
Number four?
Yeah, either, either person with a corner street yard.
That would be 48 inches.
That would be what?
Well, I guess it depends. With the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, it would be 48 inches in both If we, if it's abutting a front street yard, as shown here, number four would be restricted to 42 inches.
So it would be the same as the neighbor could do on his own.
Right.
Okay, so I get that, and I think that's good. And then as far as the opacity is concerned, you know, yeah, it's more restrictive, but you just went through and showed that what we're asking for is readily available all over the place. And it tries to find some compromise between what one person might want to put up and what one person living next to them might want to see. So as long as I've been on the council, I've had to deal with situations involving both perspectives. Lately, we've had people who want to do something with their corner yard, asking for some leeway. But a few years ago, I think I shared it with Bob and Amy, we had a person react to what somebody put in their corner street yard, and all of a sudden, they had to look at that every day. So my thing has always been, you know, having to look at a wall is not what we buy into in the public realm. That, that whole street concept is, you know, the whole concept of setbacks, the whole concept of all these different yards exists because we're trying to balance what the homeowner wants with what the community expects as well. And so I think the opacity strikes that balance fairly well. So I'm actually fairly supportive of what you've got. And then as for your, I'll wait till you go again, because I'm not exactly sure what you were talking about. Sorry. I'm done.
Ms. Mayor, I promise to return to you. Anything else you want to add, or query you want to make?
What Alderman Bruno is trying to get across is the back corner of the house. The back corner of the structure on the lower right-hand side would be where Alderman Bruno wants to strike the start of the corner street yard. Whereas I think it's actually clearer to start it at the very front of the structure, where the front setback ends. That, that would be a more uniform way to define it, but I understand what Alderman Bruno is getting at here, to limit how far that corner street yard can come forward to the front. the front. I would say that I'd be on the same page with the back corner, but for the fact that there's usually a side door on houses, and those side doors generally want to come to the backyard, not to the front yard, on several houses. So, if there's a, if there's a homeowner that comes forward and has a door that wants to be in their backyard, there, we're going to end up in the same bind, where they have to pay five hundred dollars for a variance if, if they want to put that line forward a little bit. So, I kind of like the way staff has drawn it, because it leaves some interpretation open for where that line goes, which could benefit our residents in negotiating how this back fence can be done. I don't think the opacity in the front yard is relevant, but I do think that having the side, the corner street yard side being thirty percent open is important to me personally. I think that I agree with Alderman Maladra about having a wall versus an open feeling there. That's, the only other thing I wanted to ask you about David was, are there a lot of neighborhoods that are impacted by this? Because a lot of neighborhoods have PUD requirements for fencing, I believe.
I mean--
Or HOAs.
Yes, we, we have a pretty healthy mix of HOAs, PUDs, and then just straight zoning.
Right. So, a lot of the older area of Geneva is probably not a PUD governed or an HOA, including areas around the high school and, you know, all of the city blocks that were original, I would imagine, are impacted by this.
We have several subdivisions, too, that may have covenants and restrictions, but they don't have an active HOA, and we don't enforce those private covenants and restrictions.
Okay. So, it's a lot of houses that are impacted by this?
Yeah.
So, I like the way that the Planning Commission drafted it, redrafted it, and would vote for that straight away, with the exception of the front yard opacity. I'd take that off.
So, in the, in the front yard, it could be a solid fence, because it's a shorter height?
There have been no amendments offered with respect to modifying the language yet?
Yeah.
Ms. Burghart?
Do you mind if I ask you a couple of questions first?
Of course, absolutely.
Okay, thank you for this. And this map is helpful. David, is there any case where a lot, under the, what the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning recommended, is there ever, is there any lot where they couldn't meet that forty-eight inch fence requirement if they had a pool, if we follow what Planning and Zoning's recommending? Is there any, like, any of these setups where they wouldn't be able to do a forty-eight inch fence?
I, I think only if they didn't want to have an open fence, if those, if those requirements were adopted, and they wanted, say, a privacy fence by the pool, then they would have to pull it back to the, the house, to the setback.
But as of now, there are a lot of places where they can't meet the forty-eight inches because of the side yard, and so they're, that, that's where we have the people who say, "You're requiring forty-two inch for me, but to meet the swimming code, I need to have forty-eight inch," right? So, this--
Right. I think I might still have a slide kind of tied onto the end here. Yeah. So, in this example, that, that kind of green dash line, that's where they could have forty-eight inches or even six feet.
Six feet on their home property, yeah.
But if they wanted to come into the street yard, as the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended, it could be a forty-eight inch fence there, provided it was an open fence.
Gotcha, okay. So, that, that was my big pain point, was like, the deal with the pools, that I wanted people to be able to meet the, the pool requirement. But like Alderman Swanson said, I'm, I'm not wild about adding the opacity requirements. I, I do remember us being kind of torn, and I think I remember saying, like, "We should hash this out," and being told, like, "Oh, let Planning and Zoning deal with it." I feel like we're back to, you know, and a lot of us were still, like, trying to figure it out. I, I just, yeah, I don't know that I wanted it more restrictive. Is Naperville's, were they one that allowed forty-eight inches in the front yard? I was thinking that there were a couple of the suburbs that--
So, forty-eight inches for open fences. So, again, if it, if you wanted to go up to that height, it had to be an open fence, was their requirement?
And thirty-six inches if you wanted to, if you wanted it closed, I guess it looks like, huh? Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm struggling with this. It's more complex than I'd ever think, but I'm, I'm glad that it, it meets that pool, the pool issue. But again, like Alderman Swanson said, I'm not wild about making even more requirements that, you know, that we're going into, like, thirty percent, you know, this kind of mathematical equation of, of how much is open. So, I'm eager to hear what other thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's not yet spoken wish to do so? Mr. Kocerog?
I, um, thanks a lot for doing this. And I wanted to ask about the chain link part. You said they talked about that at Planning and Zoning. Where was that addressed in the regulations and stuff? I, I might have missed that.
So, it was one of the, the add-ons to eleven-three-dash-five, number ten there. Fences located in the street yard shall be constructed as an open fence. Fences located in the rear yard should not be required. No, that's where I put it. I swear, that's where I put it. I think it's shown that way in the staff report and the draft ordinance. I might have forgot to update the slide here. Yeah. So, in the ordinance and in the staff report, it says, "After that first sentence, however, chain link fences shall not be permitted in a street yard," which would include the front and the corner.
Okay. Thank you. Just beat me into my question right there. And then, I, I think I was a big, you know, just for the record, I think I was a big proponent of the opacity issue at our Cal meeting last time, and I still am. I think it allows for a better aesthetic in our community, and it's what, as Alderman Maladra said, I think it's a good compromise between what you would want and what your neighbors might want to look at. So, if we wanted to get more into it, I do appreciate what Naperville did with, shorter can be solid, taller can go with some opacity. I mean, I think that could be a compromise we could discuss tonight, but in general, I like the opacity. And I think it offers a nicer aesthetic in Geneva, so I would be for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's not yet spoken wish to do so on this matter? Otherwise, I'm happy to recognize someone who might have an amendment to offer, or perhaps not. Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. If you can go back to that diagram with the, with all the lots. There you go. So, for Alderman Maladra's--
Sorry, yeah.
So, my concern is, in terms of curing the issue with swimming pools, that corner street yard could theoretically allow forty-eight inches all the way to the front of the house, if that house didn't have a, a jog in it, if you can point to the--
Example three would show that?
Oh, no, that would be, oh, yeah, there you go. Yeah. Well, that, that corner street yard. So, that corner street yard goes all the way to the front of the house. That doesn't do anything to advance the solution for, it, it's more, more latitude than is necessary to cure the issue for a swimming pool. Because if you have a swimming pool in your backyard, in the white area of lot three there, you'll really only need forty-eight inches up to that point of the house where he's pointing now. Whereas, the ordinance as written will allow forty-eight inches all the way up to the front street yard. And if we're concerned with fences in the public realm, I think the definition should shorten the corner street yard and extend the front street yard around. That can still have, for the side entrance, that can still have forty-two inch fence, you know, so they can secure that side entrance. But I hope that helps. So, I would, I would like to make a, a motion that we amend the ordinance to change the corner street yard to limit to the rear of the primary structure, with language drafted by staff as appropriate.
The amendment offered is to change current corner street yard language to locate to rear of structure.
To, to limit--
Primary structure, correct?
To limit corner street yard to the rear of primary structure.
Corner street yard to the rear of primary structure. That is an amendment offered by Mr. Bruno. Is there a second of that amendment?
Second.
Mr. Marx offers the second. We can discuss now the amendment. Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. I have a confession to make. Ever since we had our Cal discussion, I've been, as I walk the dog, I've been looking at people's fences. And I have noticed several fences that are similar to what Alderman Bruno is suggesting, and quite frankly, I think they look silly. And, and it's where there's a strip of fence, and it's forty-eight inches, and then it hits some setback, and then there's a drop down, and then it continues at forty-two. And, and I'm, I'm not sure it's accomplishing what you're looking for. I, I think frankly, they look silly, and it was a lot of additional cost, so I, I would be opposed to that amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else on the amendment offered and seconded? Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm also opposed to that, because I think that the whole reason why we're even considering this is to stop the fiddling around when people want to put up a fence. And I think that that constitutes more like granular look at where, where we're starting and stopping than perhaps is necessary. I think people set that back corner of their fence based on what the structure needs and how the backyard lays out. So, I, I would be against this amendment.
Anyone have a kind word to say? I'm just teasing.
I meant mine nicely.
I know, of course you did, yes.
You were gracious.
I'm not sure there was kindness offered. Anyone else wish to speak to the amendment? If not, we will vote on the amendment. A simple majority. Those who vote aye support the amendment as offered. Those who vote nay are opposed to the amendment that is offered. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready. This is on the amendment.
Right. Bruno?
Hi.
Burghart?
Nay.
Cavan?
Nay.
Kilberg?
Nay.
Kocerog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
With one vote in the affirmative, eight in the negative, and one absent, the amendment fails. We are back to the main motion. Ms. Burghart?
Thank you, Mayor. As I think about this opacity issue, so I'm in a neighborhood where there's a lot of fences that are side yard fences that are six feet tall, and there, there's no, there's no light between them. And they've been, you know, they're basically great, you know, predate any kind of fence ordinance. And I think, what would it take for those people, you know, when it takes them time to replace those, to, to do the forty-eight, you know, inch? And I, I think those people are looking for some privacy in their backyard, because they're basically right on top, you know, on these city blocks or right on top of the street. And so, I, when we talk about this opacity and this kind of, like, see-through fences, I, I just don't think any of those people with those six-foot fences will ever, they'll do whatever they can to keep those six-foot, you know, blockade kind of fences up, because they're never going to go for this with the opacity. So, that's what's on my mind. I think what I'm, I'm struggling with this opacity issue. Yes, I like, visually, yes, I like the ones that you can, you know, you can see through, and they're more decorative. I try to think about, I guess, you'd have to have a pretty tiny dog to have to worry about them getting through the pickets. But, I mean, I kind of think I was in favor of forty-eight inch in the front, too, because I just thought, let's be consistent, and just, and obviously, other suburbs have done it. But that's kind of like, what's, what's on my mind as, as, as we near this one for a potential vote. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kocerog, Mr. Maladra, Mr. Swanson?
Again, on the opacity issue, I feel like it's being framed as you can't have a six-foot fence or a solid fence. And you can, if I'm not mistaken. It just has to be at the setback or beyond. So, we're really just talking about, can you have a privacy fence closer to the sidewalk or a couple feet back? And so, people have the right to build that fence. It's not that they can't. It's just literally a couple feet. And that's the aesthetic that I think that I'm looking for and why I'm going for that. And I'm not at all telling anybody they can't have a privacy fence at all. They just have to be, I guess, willing to give up a little bit of the yard for it. And I think that's, that's a good trade-off for the aesthetic in the city. So, that's all I wanted to add.
Mr. Maladra, then--
Yes, I guess I need clarification again. Sorry if I'm going slow. So, Tara referenced side yards. What I was concerned about is corner street yard and front street yard.
Sorry, that's what I'm talking about. People-- With corner street yards that have six-foot blockade-like fences that are predate any kind of fence ordinance. I'm just trying to think what it would take for them to, like, are they ever going to go with this with the opacity?
Again, yeah, I think that, I, I get it. And then, to a question somebody asked earlier about how many of these are we looking at, we're really only looking at a problem, or at least the problem that I envision occurs only when one person's corner street yard abuts a front street yard next door to that. And so, what we're saying is, the guy with the corner street yard can do forty-eight inches solid wall if he wants to, but then his neighbor with his front street yard can only do forty-two inches, because it's a front street yard. If we're interested in protecting the front street yard mid-block, why are we not also interested in protecting the front street yard on the corner as well? And then, when you think about it, again, it's the street yard. You're standing on a Geneva corner, looking up the street. Do we want to see fortresses hiding behind solid walls, or do we envision Bedford Falls, where George Bailey's kicking over the picket fence gate? And again, you know, these kind of restrictions, they sound onerous to some people, but they're common. I think that, you know, if you buy a house on a golf course, you can't put up a fence. And people are still buying houses on golf courses. Here in Geneva, you bought a corner lot, it has restrictions. It's just, they're there. They're known. We're not adding. And then, we're trying to allow extra height, but at the same time, protecting the public space, which, when you get to mid-block, has different rules than the guy on the corner already. And we're not worried about his rights, you know, so. So, the opacity thing, to me, becomes important in those situations where the corner street yard abuts a front street yard of a neighbor. And if we can alter the code to address those specific situations, in my walks, I don't really see that many situations like that. In, in this drawing, you have none. It happens when the front door, oh, the one in the bottom right? I don't know where the front door is. Sorry, guys.
So, example four would be a corner street yard that abuts a front street yard. As recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that would be four--
Okay, yeah.
--here, but only forty-two inches--
Right, yeah, so--
In number three.
In those situations, sorry, that's where I'm concerned about, height and opacity.
Anything else, Mr. Maladra?
No, I, I think the horse is about dead.
Mr. Swanson, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderwoman Burghart brought up a good point, and, and it's very prevalent in the fifth ward, the first ward, and a little bit of the third ward, in that we have small lot sizes. And if you look at the bottom right yard, you know, and Alderman earlier said, you know, "Just give up a few feet." However, that is monumental to some of the yards in at least the fifth ward, where the, the lots are sixty-six hundred square feet or nine thousand square feet. And if you look how that bottom right property is, is divided, you are significantly reducing, the white part is your outdoor space, you are turning that into a posted stamp-sized outdoor space. So, this is providing those people with a little bit of privacy for their outdoor space. We don't regulate what is across the street from a standpoint of landscaping, or what color you paint your house, or anything else. But all of those fences become-- color you paint your house, or anything else, but all of his fences become a monumental thing that we have to regulate to the teeth. Whereas, they could be looking at the, the most horribly landscaped home in the world, or, or there would be a, a row of 20-foot giant arborvitae's. So again, we can't regulate everything. Let's at least provide privacy to some of the people. And making it opaque certainly does not do that. So I, I feel very strongly that we should remove, and, and I would make a motion to remove the 30% opacity requirement. In my research, there are suburbs who have had it, and then they've been pulling it back because fence makers or residents are saying this is too restrictive, and it's reducing the options that our residents have. Mendota Heights is a suburb of Minneapolis, which has a higher income than Geneva does. They removed their opacity for those reasons. So it's, it's not a, a cure-all that because we have this 30% rule, everyone's going to be happy and smiling. There are issues and, and other problems that could arise. So, so it makes me very uncomfortable to continually add regulations. So I, I would, my motion would be to remove the 30% opacity from the proposed regulations.
Mr. Swanson offers an amendment to remove the 30% capacity restrictions. Is there a second of that amendment?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Berghardt. We can discuss that amendment in great length. Mr. Maladra with great excitement.
So regarding restrictions, hey David, can I put a shed, could I put a four-foot by six-foot by six-foot box in a front street yard or a corner street yard?
No.
No. So we do regulate, for good reason. And so picking on a fence is different from a tree. I'm sorry that the trees can be ugly. To me, it's not an aesthetic thing. It's, it's, it's recognizing, as I said, what's the difference between the corner street yard of the corner lot and the front street yard of the guy next door to him? The guy next door to him, we've got a certain height requirement, and we're saying that the corner lot can be taller just because, but it's the same space. It's the, it's, it's the public space as you look at the front street yard. We can't put whatever we want there. I might want to put a box there to store my pool equipment, or my chair cushions or whatever, but, you know, let's not change our laws to allow boxes wherever we want to put them. We're, we're reacting because right now people are saying, I want to change so I can put up a pool. Five years ago, we had people complaining about the fence that the neighbor put up. I think regulation is happening no matter what. Regarding the opacity requirement per se, I think that the problem comes when you talk about, or at least as I've heard it, what our code asks for today is not readily available. It's not standard, it's more expensive. What the code we're proposing asks for is readily available and is standard, and also gives something to the public space that perhaps we don't have today. The onerousness of it compared to what we have today, I don't see. We're not forcing them to get custom fences. They can go to Menards and buy a fence. How many of the fences at Menards are 33% open or less? I don't know, but I imagine that these things are also standard. So I, I would vote against the motion to remove the opacity.
Anyone else on the amendment offered? And that is to remove the 30% opacity requirement in the street yard. Sensing none, seeing none, expecting none. An aye vote is to support the amendment. A nay vote is to oppose the amendment. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Nay.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Kaven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kosarog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
With a vote of two in the affirmative, seven in the negative, one absent, that amendment fails. We are back to the main motion, as iterated 17 hours ago. So, I'm just teasing. Ms. Berghardt, and then Mr. Marks.
So, the top right corner, if we were to flip that and it was to be not, I'm sorry. The top right corner, if we were flipping that house and it was facing the street that's above it, you know, if it was like two houses back to back, would that, the side yard, they'd still have a side yard?
If it was, if it was a corner street yard to a corner street yard relationship, then both could be 48 inches.
And they would, but they'd need the opa, the opacity.
Right.
Right. And we didn't, in our previous ordinance, we didn't have anything about opacity.
Correct.
Okay. But they could be, and under the planning and zoning recommendations, how it's set up here, they still could both have 48 inches? Under the?
No.
So, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended 48 inches for all corner street yards.
Right, okay. And I'm in favor of that because I do think, I mean.
Provided the, the open fence requirements are established.
Yeah, but, okay. But, but what's before us, or, what's before us is what planning and zoning recommended with 48 inches across the board at side street yards?
Correct.
Whether it's bumping up against a front or not. Okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Forgive me, Mr. Marks. I'm sorry.
I like what they've done. The only question I have is when you look at the far bottom right, you see that solid line between the two corner yards? What fence is allowed in that?
Right here.
No, up, up higher. Up, that, that line right there, what fence is allowed all the way across that?
That would be 48 inches.
Opaque or not?
Yes.
So the whole backyard then is 48 inches is, that's what I guess, I'm not sure what that solid line fence is.
Once you get into the white area, it can go to six feet and be a privacy fence.
Okay, got it. All right. So it can then?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
Sorry to interject. So I thought the, given that that is a front yard of their rear neighbor.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
That, that small segment where there's the front street yard and the front side yard, wouldn't that be 42?
Not as recommended by the commission. That was, that was the direction the committee the whole gave us, and that was a change the commission made, was to go to 48 inches in all corner street yards.
Okay, no exceptions, so they could put a 48-inch fence in abutting someone else's front yard?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The main motion's on the floor, ladies and gentlemen. And that main motion was, I'm going to test the clerk here, that main motion was.
The one that's on the agenda.
Yeah, the one that's on the agenda. Well, I know, but I'm curious as to who made, who made it.
Kilburg.
Kilburg, and seconded, I believe, by?
Mayor.
Mayor, yeah. Got it.
Call question?
Question's been called. You need a second on that, yes?
Second.
Seconded by Kosarog. A roll call vote to call the question, a simple majority rules the day. Those in favor of calling the question would vote aye. Those in favor of not calling the question, allowing for more discussion, would vote nay. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Nine in favor of calling the question, zero against, and one absent. The question's been called. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll call.
All right. Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Berghardt?
Nay.
Kaven?
Aye.
There's six votes in the affirmative, three votes in the negative, one absent. Item 12A, as written, has been approved. On to item 12B, ladies and gentlemen. Consider approval of ordinance number 2022-39, granting of variation to decrease the required street yard setback along East State Street from 20 feet to 12 and a half feet for pin number 12-02-380-009 for the proposed Conna Dentistry.
Second.
Motion by Swanson, seconded by Marks. Ms. Dawkins, are you going to ask anyone else to comment, or is this all yours?
No, I was just going to give a brief summary.
You got it.
Okay, so the property is located on the south side of East State Street between Harrison and Sandome Streets, and is currently vacant. Conna Dentistry was the original, was originally granted site plan approval in 2005. It was revised in the 2006, 2007 time period, and reviewed by the Plan Commission in 2007, but it never proceeded to the City Council. The project was eventually postponed due to the recession of 2008. The applicant would now like to proceed with the revised proposal, but will no longer conform to the required street yard setback requirements due to the East State Street Road construction project, which requires an additional 13 feet of right-of-way dedication along the north property line. As such, the applicant is requesting a variation to reduce the required street yard setback to 12 and a half feet, so the proposed building can be constructed in its originally approved location without reducing the size of the building. The applicant believes that the parking can be reconfigured on the site to comply with the requested 12 and a half foot street yard setback. At its meeting on August 25th, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested variation. We do have a representative from Conna Dentistry with us this evening, as well as Director to answer any additional questions.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, if there are any questions, and we have to limit our questions to only the variation, it's not regarding the proposed development itself. Any questions, or do you wish to add anything, madam?
That was very well said.
Why, thank you.
It is a very tight.
Come on up to the microphone and.
I, I would just wish.
And if you could just kindly introduce yourself.
Oh, hello, I'm Kristin Madden from Betier Architecture.
How do you do?
The site is very, very tight. So the, the parking lot curbs are to the rear lot line and the two side lot lines. So that is why we couldn't really work, and, and it's 5,000 square feet, and per the zoning, you need 20 spaces for 5,000 square feet. So with all those restrictions, we, and also that when we started the project, there was no, we were complying with the original 20-foot setback, then we had to go in for a variation to reduce the front yard setback.
Got it. From the dais, any questions for either Ms. Dawkins, or City Attorney, or our special guest? Mr. Marks.
So, is, is this variation going to take this, the, the parking spaces right up to the sidewalk where a car can overhang the sidewalk?
There's no parking at the front.
Okay.
It's the building, the very north west corner of the building will be over the revised setback.
Okay, I got it, all right.
Because of the 13-foot reduction.
So it, it's really not affecting anything hanging over a sidewalk in any place, then?
No, the, the parking is at the south and west.
Got it, all right. Appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? If not, we have a motion by Kilburg. Ooh, wait, hold on, timeout. Mr. Maladra, sorry about that.
No, no fences.
Sorry.
Let the record show.
Yep, she got it.
You got it, okay. The offer by, or excuse me, the motion by Swanson, seconded by Marks. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, one absent. Item 12B has been adopted. Thank you for your patience. We'd like to go back to item 12A again and debate this, so please stick around. Item 12C, folks. 12C is to consider approval of resolution number 2022-82, authorizing the city administrator to execute a First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for JLD Consulting Group, LLC. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Motion by Kosarog, seconded by Mayor, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so in August 2021, the City Council authorized the city administrator to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with JLD Consulting Group, LLC, to provide government-related services and strategic consulting with respect to legislation and other matters that directly impact the city of Geneva. The agreement was for a one-year period not to exceed $78,000. Over the past year, the services of the consultant have proven to be beneficial to the city. Therefore, the resolution for the City Council's consideration would authorize a First Amendment to the initial agreement, extending the term of the agreement through December 31st, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $20,000. All other terms and conditions of the initial agreement would remain unchanged. I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Questions or comments for the city administrator regarding this matter? Mr. Bruno, sir.
Sorry, I didn't put this in the earlier questions, but what are the, the biggest successes or biggest benefits that we've seen?
Sure, I think primarily is that things move quickly in Springfield, and by having somebody representing the city's interests, they're there with basically boots on the ground. So as things are moving, they're in, they're in, they're in the faces of the legislators, they're getting our, our message across to them, whereas where we pick up a phone, they may or may not answer, we may not know the right people to call, but having a person there representing our interests has really proved beneficial and supportive.
Have we seen legislation?
So primarily, originally, it had to do with the Clean Energy Jobs Act, and just, again, not that, reiterating the fact that the city was supportive, but needed to make sure we were protecting our investment as far as bonds and those things go. We've also had some successes working through various agencies. IDOT specifically on getting some funding back that we had lost.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Mr. Swanson, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I originally opposed this project, and, and I still do. I think that the, the issues that led to it was primarily seizure-related, and, and that is coming to a resolution. I, I liken this to throwing money out a moving car window, so I remain opposed to it. So I just wanted to state my, my opinion. Thank you.
That'll be an electric vehicle window? Anyone else? Mr. Maladra, sir.
I'll just, I'll just sort of not echo, but the opposite of what Bob said. To me, the issues haven't debated. I think that the, the swirl around the energy legislation in Springfield, combined with the challenges of working with IDOT in a post-COVID world, require a little more expertise and attention in Springfield than we're able to provide. So this is a perfect roll. I like the fact that it's limited to a one-year agreement. If, at the end of that year, we decide that they're not performing, or that our needs have been not.
I would clarify, it's actually only limited to the end of this year.
The end of this year, even more so. We have, we have, we have the tool we need as long as we need.
Mr. Kosarog, sir.
Is there, are we anticipating this is the final, or we're reevaluating?
So, right now, we've asked to extend it because there are still some things kind of in motion that we would like to see kind of brought to completion, or at least furthered along. I don't know what the fall legislature will bring, the veto session. I don't know what the election in the fall will bring. There's, there's a lot of moving parts, so I don't know the answer to that question right now.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Kilburg?
We're, we're a part of Metro West, and they have a lobbying effort. Maybe for clarification, you might explain why retaining our own lobbyists would have benefits over working through Metro West and, and their lobbying capabilities.
Sure, actually, and I would say they, in some regards, they work in conjunction with one another. We still utilize Metro West and all of their efforts for more regional types of issues. types of issues. Having our own representative is really to address those issues that are specific to Geneva, and, again, putting Geneva's name foot forward, face forward. It's really about relationships, is what it comes down to, and, and trying to make sure that your message is getting across.
I had one last question. Obviously, the, the State Street project is important, and obviously there, it's been protracted as far as the funding. Is, is this something that might be tapped into specifically because of it's, it's becoming increasingly a priority here in Geneva, and we want to get started? Is this one of the issues that we need, need the help with? Because it seems like you sort of referenced that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we've already been using John's services to set up some meetings that we have attempted to set up on our own, and were unsuccessful, and he was able to get us in front of those people.
The motion is offered by Mr. Kosarag, seconded by Ms. Mayor. Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
With eight in the affirmative, one in the negative, and one absent, item 12C has been approved. We're at the public comment new business item or area of the agenda. Are there any comments from Ms. McGowan? Welcome.
Okay, good evening. I'm Jeanne McGowan. Um, I wanted to come here and just express my thanks to the city for putting information on the city of Geneva website regarding the option for Geneva residents to opt out of the citywide mosquito springs. So, when I came here and spoke a few weeks ago on this matter, I wasn't sure, um, if like a motion was needed or something like that, but I, I was glad to see that it says, as of August 24th, there is information now. And how I saw that, I just did a search on the city website for "opt out," and then it came up, um, sort of like three-page document that's recent, that kind of explains, gives residents a lot of information. Um, so, uh, I think it's a good step, it's a step in the right direction, in my opinion. Um, so I'm glad to see that that information is starting to get out there, but I, I would just say that it, it seems like it's just a start. Um, and also, I was, I just want to mention, I'm glad to see that the, the option to opt out was defined as a frequently asked question. So, that indicates to me that this is something that many Geneva residents do in fact care about. So, uh, if, if you as the council members haven't had a chance to see that information yet, I know maybe it's not the most, like, crucial thing in the world right now, but, um, I would appreciate it if you could just take a few minutes and, and take a look at that document. If you haven't yet, and like I said, I just saw it myself a few days ago, just doing a, a search, and I was, I was happy to see it, but I, I would like to ask the council if you think that the information is being conveyed in a, a clear enough and straightforward enough manner, or would you like to see it, um, conveyed a little bit more clearly? Because right now, um, sorry, I have like a really bad anxiety when I speak. Um, I just think that the goal of open communication is to just easily present the information, and it seems like in that three-page document, um, there, a question is stated, like, do residents have the option to opt out? You have to kind of read down the small print to, towards the end of the second page, to really get an answer, and, and I just feel it's presented in kind of a vague way. So, like I said, it's, I'm happy to see it there, it's a good step in the right direction, but I think there could be some improvement, and I was gonna see if the council could take a look at it, and then sometime in the near future, maybe like weigh in on that, or just email me, let me know what you think. So, that's one thing. Um, and then, okay, the shirt that I'm wearing today is from an event that I attended recently, and it was, um, on Randall Road, right by the Costco in St. Charles, the King County, what is it again? Um, sorry, it's like a rural...
Extension?
What, no, not the extension.
Or your Farm Bureau?
Something like that, yeah, I feel ter... Farm Bureau, thank you. Okay, so the King County Farm Bureau, it's really cool. If you guys, anyone in the community, I recommend you go to see this. The, um, community members were invited to come and help plant a pollinator garden in the shape of the state of Illinois, and it's really big, and there's paths along the garden that are, designate the rivers, like the main rivers, and Lake Michigan is represented, and the Mississippi River is represented. But, um, I attended the event, and I helped with the planting, I got this t-shirt, and, um, there were, uh, people there providing information, and everywhere I went, it was like, pollinators are so helpful, and the number one reason for the, one of, sorry, one of the top three reasons for the recent steep decline in native pollinators is the use of pesticides. So, um, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, and then, thirdly, if I may, and thank you for your time, by the way, I, I know it's been a long night, I appreciate you guys so much. Um, I had a really good conversation today with a man named Dave, who's, I don't remember his last name, but he's the Communications Director for the North Shore Mosquito Abatement District, and that's a government agency, it's, they're almost 100 years old. Um, it encompasses Deerfield, Evanston, Glencoe, Glenview, Gulf, Kemelworth, Lincolnwood, Mortengrove, Niles, Northbrook, Northfield, Skokie, Wilmette, and Winnetka. They have not had an adulticide spray since 2019, and their focus is on the larvicide application. So, that's just a choice that they made. Um, and I, I just think it's good to kind of share what other, like, larger agencies are doing. And if you guys know the North Shore and that whole area, it's very wooded, there's ponds, it's swampy, you know, there's, um, tons of potential for mosquitoes and flooding events and such, but, again, they haven't had an adulticide area-wide spray since 2019, and they've been able to use community outreach, um, public awareness, and emphasis on the, sorry, if I, I want to back up. Emphasis on the larvicide. If I said that incorrectly, please forgive me. They, they emphasize the larvicide treatment, which is much, much more gentle to the environment. Um, so they haven't had an adulticide spray, which can kill pollinators. And I mentioned moths last time, there's over 500 species of moths in Illinois, and they are being, more and more is learning, is being learned about moths, and how they are also essential pollinators. So, and the, um, King County Farm Bureau event was emphasizing how pollinators, um, lead to us having food to eat. So, that, you know, that's their kind of take on it. But, um, a couple quick more little anecdotal things about the North Shore Abatement District. Um, so, they offer the service, maybe Geneva does too. If they do, that's awesome, but if a resident calls and says, "I'm having a horrible problem with mosquitoes on my property," they will, um, offer to have someone come and like walk the property with the homeowner, and kind of help to identify if there are, um, areas of standing water, or something that could be breeding these mosquitoes on the property. The man Dave I spoke with said that 99% of the time, they do find standing water, like an overturned, like gardening pot or something that has old wa, old water sitting in it, or something to that effect. So, really, that's part of their community outreach, um, portion of it. And, um, also, I've read about this, but Dave mentioned it as well, that there's growing resistance to these mosquitoes, the, the ones that carry West Nile virus. These mosquitoes are becoming resistant to the adulticide sprays. So, it's kind of like using antibiotics. You kind of want to like minimize as much as possible, and I'm sure Clerk knows this, but I think it's important to bring it up publicly, that the more times you use adulticide sprays, um, the more resistance is being seen in these mosquitoes. So, then it doesn't really do anything. So, that's just something to think about. Um, and in the North Shore, residents do have the option to opt out there as well, and this is interesting, if they provide a note from a doctor. And they don't have to specify what the reason is, um, obviously there's HIPAA privacy involved, but they just have to provide a note from a physician saying, like, "We recommend that this person's property not be sprayed." So, they, they take it as like a hu, a human health issue. I, I'm more concerned about pollinators. Of course, the human health issue is very important as well. And, so, that is it. I just wanted to thank you guys again, and if you could please, um, take a look at that information, and let me know if you think it's, it's clear and concise to the, to the average person. I, I found it a little bit challenging to kind of sift through and find the information, so, alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I know why you guys are here. Thank you for your patience. How are you?
Just fine.
Good, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Paul Darrow. Uh, my wife and I are the owners of Country Village Meats on the east side of town. Two years ago, uh, my wife and I started looking for a suitable building to build a butcher shop here in Geneva, and we found one on the east side of the town. Uh, it was an old, tired building, uh, but we thought it would be very suitable for a butcher shop and fit our needs. Um, when we looked into it, though, it needed a lot of work. It needed more renovation work than we could afford. And so, two years ago, we started the process of coming before city and before this council, asking for some assistance through the TIF finance available to support that project. And at that time, you believed in us, you believed in our vision, and you supported us with some TIF financing. So, I'm here tonight to say thank you. Thank you very much for that assistance. We would not have been able to do this project without it. So, we're very grateful for that. I also want to say thank you to city staff, um, who helped guide us throughout the process. Um, we've never worked with the city before on a development project like this before, so they had a lot of coaching to do for us. I want to give out a special shout-out to Kathleen Timoshenko, who was very instrumental in helping and guiding me through the process. So, today, Geneva has a new butcher shop, a new full-service butcher shop, which if you come by, you'll find that it's not just our small little business, we have over a dozen other small businesses that sell their products in our store. Um, there's three of them from Geneva, a couple of them, I think, from St. Charles, one from West Chicago. Uh, we're looking at a couple of from Batavia. We've got some from Walnut, Illinois, Galena Canning Company from Galena, Illinois. Um, these are all small, family entrepreneurs, uh, you know, trying to, to make, uh, make a living. And so, if you come visit us, you'll be supporting our business, as well as several others in the area. Um, I'm also here to invite you to our grand opening, so I'm happy to say that after our two-year journey, um, we're working through the Chamber of Commerce. We have, um, Thursday, September 29th, at 9:45 will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and then we're gonna have a three-day celebration on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of that week, and we will have those small businesses that I just referenced, they're all gonna come and sample their wares on those days. We'll be sampling our meat as well. We'll have, uh, some door prizes, we'll have some new featured meat products available, and we want to welcome all of you to that occasion, as well as invite the community. So, again, we're very grateful for your support. Um, we've had a lot of very positive comments, as customers have streamed in since we've opened on our soft opening in April. We've received many, many good comments about it. So, again, thank you very much. I hope to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you on the 29th.
Yes.
Sorry I'll be out of town for that, but I've been in your store several times, and uh, it's a great addition to the city.
Thanks.
Mike, give me your credit card, I'll be sure to pick something up for you on the 29th. Thank you, Mr. Darrow, very much. We, uh, anyone else, new business, otherwise? Yes, sir, please do. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hello, my name is Adam, I live on the east side of Geneva, I've, I've been there for, uh, almost 10 years, and I notice that everyone here is very serious about how the public, uh, part of Geneva looks, from the discussion on fences, and I think, uh, one of the things that is public and has been a great, uh, part of the community is the Art on Fire with the hydrants. But, uh, there's one, uh, fire hydrant that is, uh, is in a very busy intersection, and it has a particular painting on it with, that represents the LGBTQ, I believe those are the proper acronym for, flag. And I noticed in the Art on Fire application, it says that, "What is prohibited on fi, hydrants," and there are three explicit things, inappropriate words, advertisements, and political messages. And I am just proposing that that is a political message, to have a flag that, uh, represents lots of lobby groups and others that have, have incorporated lots of policy changes in the United States, even here, in the bathrooms, and, uh, around Illinois, as well as locally. And so, I also noticed that there's been a lot of vandalism. I've never seen it, I've never seen the, I've never seen it not painted as it has, as it is now, I think it is now, which is still that, with six colors, and then some other colors on hydrant, peace symbol. And so, it seems to me that that has, it is a political message, and it, and it has riled up someone, I don't know who, but to try to vandalize it, and I would propose to, uh, not have, have it painted as such, so that you would not be supporting a political message.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, uh, anything from the dais? Again, it's Cavan's birthday Friday, so the flag will be at half-staff.
I make a motion to adjourn.
The motion's made. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll transition in one minute to the Committee of the Whole meeting.
Good evening, everybody. This is Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. I'm Tara Burkhart, I represent the first ward, along with Alderman Mike Bruno. Uh, we have everyone here tonight, except for Alderman Ruby. We'll get started with number two. Recommend suspending the rules to permit Councilmember Burkhart to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
Still moved.
Uh, motion from Alderman Bruno, and second by Alderman Swanson. Uh, could I have a voice vote? It's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Uh, number three, approve Committee of the Whole minutes from August 15th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Alderman Mayor and Alderman Marks the second. Uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. For A, going on to items of business. For A, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of an identification sign easement agreement with Robert A. Lund at 642 Nicole in Genie, Geneva. Uh, do I have a motion?
Second.
Mayor and Alderman Kosarag with a second. Uh, is there any discussion on this? Oh, we're gonna hear from our city administrator.
Okay, so for your consideration is an easement for the, uh, what we call the identification signs or the welcome signs. This would be for one at Division and Kirk. The original sign location was originally going to be about five houses south of the intersection in the KDOT right-of-way, however, it was abandoned when the utility locator, locator revealed that a St. Charles electric transmission line was present. Uh, as the corner avoids this conflict, we approached Mr. Lund, the owner of 642 Nicole, whose land meets the right-of-way at the southwest corner of Division and Kirk. Mr. Lund agreed to provide an easement at nominal cost to the city, and the new sign will be partially set on city right-of-way and partially set on Mr. Lund's lot. The agreement commits the city to removing the existing bush and improving the parkway sod adjacent to the easement area. Um, we would note that the area was disturbed after a car accident and is currently in poor condition, so this would be a definite improvement. And I do have Director Timoshenko present to answer any additional questions. I will tell you, um, she's been working hard on these, because during the process, IDOT changed, KDOT has changed their rules, IDOT has changed their rules. Finding spaces where there's not conflicts with utilities, or the right-of-way conflicts, um, has been a challenge, but we finally got another one done, so, assuming this passes this evening, congrats should go out to Kathleen.
Is there any discussion from the dais on this one?
Uh, not specifically as relates to this, but, uh, our sign program in general. Uh, I don't know if anyone noticed the sign that's been placed on, uh, on 31, uh, just north of Fabian. Yeah, its visibility is, uh, marginal at best. I'm wondering if there couldn't be something done to, uh, and I guess the forest preserve is who we're involved with there, if we couldn't clear some of the, um, some of the, um, rubbery or brush, uh, to the south to improve visibility of that sign. It, it's recessed, and it's, I mean, you're, you're on top of it before you even see it. So, again, that, uh, and again, I know it's not related to what we have in front of us here, but I just thought I'd point it out now, but, uh, I, you've done a great job with the sign program. I know that there's a lot of red tape that has to be worked through to get these placed. Appreciate it. appreciate it. And this one all makes sense as well, but.
No, it's a good suggestion, especially now because it's at the end of the growing season, so it might look worse, you know, more disturbed now. So we could take a look at it again and see if there's some clearing we could request.
I know, and we'd have to work with the forest preserve on that.
We would.
Okay. And did we have difficulty getting that site with the forest preserve initially?
It wasn't because of the forest preserve. It was because the hard corner is actually not even in the city of Geneva. And then there were plans to do intersection improvements, so we had to move back. And then there's a really significant grade alteration, and we were looking to put the sign and trying to build it up, so it was complex for a number of reasons. But the forest preserve was not the problem, it was more the terrain.
Okay.
The forest preserve is always helpful with our, as is the Park District with these requests.
And one last question as relates to the signage that we have on North Anderson Boulevard. We have one scheduled for that location, and that's going to be one of our last ones, I would assume.
Right, so we, with this sign going in, we'll complete all the secondary locations. We've completed all the arterial locations, but one that was postponed due to KDOT construction. We're hoping possibly we can get that in next year, and then we'll be moving away from those onto the tertiary signs. And the Anderson location is tertiary. We're going to be bringing that to the city council as soon as we're done examining all the locations. We have a new contract to bring to you probably within 30 days for those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kathleen. I can't say I pay attention to all those signs now that we've gone through this, and I haven't seen any that I like as much as Geneva, and I know how much obviously work. And it's nice to know these are all being done, you know, in a very proper sort of fashion, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else, discussion? Nope. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. For B, consider draft resolution authorizing a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Isaac's Upholstery and Furniture at 8:30 East State Street in Geneva. Okay, Alderman Swanson and Alderman Kocarag with a second.
Okay, and I'm actually going to turn the floor over to Director Timoshenko to provide introduction on this item.
Mine's supposed to be on the, mine is supposed to be on the dashboard. It is? Where would that be then?
I was just coming.
Looking for PowerPoint? Oh, it might just be here. There it is. I got it. Thank you. Some moral support. How do you put it into the, there we go. Okay. So, just introduction sake, Kathleen Timoshenko, Economic Development Director. We're going to talk about a private-public partnership at Isaac's at 8:30 East State Street. We do have the owners here, and what we will do is we will go through our presentation and then give the owners opportunity to speak also and ask any questions that you may have. So, one quick technical issue, I'm trying to figure out how to make this a little bit bigger. Okay, I'm not sure how to do that. Okay. So, the property is within the East State Street redevelopment, TIF II, as we call it. And TIF II was established in 2000, and it is going to come to termination soon, since it's a 23-year TIF. So there's nine partial blocks that make up this area, all fronting along East State Street, north side of state from school to Longview on the east, and Nebraska on the west, and Simpson on the east. So the goals of the district, when the, when the TIF district was put into place, are listed there, and as you'll see, the project that we're going to propose tonight does enhance a lot of, a lot of these goals of the district. Eliminating deterioration is probably one of the, the highlights of the project. Improving the streetscape and the building improvements, and then helping to maintain the character and meet the needs of a modern district are the ones I would highlight. So the redevelopment plan objectives is a way, is written into the plan, it's the reason that the plan was put together, and it's a way to measure projects that you're bringing forward to see whether they're meeting your objectives and the reason that you put, put this into place. And looking through the objectives, which I'm not going to read to you, but in looking through them, this project meets all of the objectives but for one. It does not include land assembly for redevelopment, which is about a little bit more than halfway down. But this project does meet all of the other objectives of the redevelopment area. The qualifying conditions are when you are looking to put a TIF together, you have to meet statutory requirements for one of the, one of the ways that you could create a TIF. This is, this TIF, there were these qualifying conditions that were found throughout the district, and when you work on projects, you want to keep these in mind and really try to combat these conditions so that you're reversing trends, so that when the TIF expires, you've come out with a better area and future success will be ensured. For our project, one note is that the conditions right now are below minimum code standards. So that is a qualifying condition that was noted and something that will be remedied with, with the efforts that we're, we're bringing forward tonight. So there's some notable projects on East State Street. I know that sometimes there's, there's still work that needs to be done, but it's nice to sometimes take a breath and look at all of the improvements that were brought forward. Most recent are the Three on the End, Country Village Meets, The Pharmacy, and then Rigorato's. And then we always have the East State Street right-of-way project that everybody is continuing to push forward. And then you have the older projects that happened at earlier in the TIF, which are really a lot of the anchors, properties, CVS and Aldi's, and of course Dairy Queen. So looking at Isaac's, it is a very important building. The site is relatively large considering the size of properties and sites on the East State Street. It is a two-story property. It's, it's got the frame building, which is the original older structure, and then it's got the brick commercial building, which is newer. It has been used for the retail and productions for Isaac's Upholstery since 1976. And our owner is here tonight, Abet Cortez, and she's actually second-generation owner who's purchased the family business in 2017. And Isaac was her dad. He had established the business, and now she operates the business in partnership with her, with her husband Israel, who's also here tonight. They specialize in custom upholstery, new and vintage, and they focus on creating solutions. And they're doing very well in expanding and continuing to grow the business. They've, they brought in window treatments, they've reinvented process for making customer quotes easy and convenient for people, and they've really done a lot. I've spent a lot of time talking with them about what they've done to date and what their dreams and hopes and aspirations and goals are for the, for the business. They've put several of them in place, and they have a lot more future goals that they're, they're working toward. And I think that Geneva will be fortunate to continue to have Isaac's as a staple business in, in this area. So, you know, there are problems with the site, and, and part of the issues that prevent the investment into the site is because the owners have to go between whether they're going to put money into the business and grow the business, or how they're going to manage the site. The site is definitely below code standards. We've got, you know, no asphalt, no hard surface, there's gravel. There is parking on the city parkway, which is below minimum code standards. It's a violation of, of our codes. And it's also just really poor friendliness for customers. It's not a good entrance, and it, it's really not reflective of the quality merchandise and, and service that you're receiving when you're within the property. I think that there's been a lot of attempts to bring forward upgrades to this property, but it is a really high hurdle. You, when you start to look at, you know, the, the level of improvements that are there that have been at this level for a long time, and bringing them all the way up to the code standards that we have in place, it is a huge amount of money. It's not a matter of just, you know, paving it. You have to do the improvements to our level, you have to do stormwater, you have to put, you know, your ADA access, you have to put concrete curbs, you have to put landscaping. So once you start to look at that, the amount of things that you have to do, it becomes a project that there's definitely a gap to reach that. So, you know, the owners have worked a great deal on trying to right-size their workspace, and they believe that they will be able to offer some interior space to a co-tenant, and that co-tenant could potentially be a retail co-tenant. But how do you get to that next phase? You really can't with a site that looks like this. Who's going to want to take that next step? So they really do have this hurdle to continuing investment, and that's where the TIF, we believe, can come in and help to move that needle. And we're not investing in a business, we're investing in a site and a property that will continue to be there, even if I'm wrong and the business doesn't continue. So the, we had looked at, at one point in our conversations, we had looked at trying to help fund a larger type of program that included some exterior work and some interior work, but really, that became even a higher mountain to climb. So really, we're looking at this as a first step to be able to move the rest of their project along. Some of their future projects are, goals are listed there, relocating the door and signage and landscaping. So here is an engineer drawing of what is hoped for the property. You have the replacement of the, the gravel parking area with new asphalts, concrete curbs, driveway, ADA access to the, for vehicles, and for people to come out of their cars and access the property, drainage improvements, landscaping and lighting. And then, you know, restoring the Simpson Parkway, sort of kind of quote, taking back the parkway for what, what it should be, which is, you know, some sod, sidewalk, some trees, to really improve and soften that, that corner view. And it'll, it'll give the property such better curb appeal too, for, for their business to shine in the, in the area. Of course, we will be remedying the non-conformity or, you know, bringing it up to minimum, minimum code standards, and like I said, it would be more user-friendly, customer-friendly. So we, like I said earlier, we had initiated a discussion a few years back, trying to understand what the hurdle was and trying to help the owners work toward the investment that we were, we were trying to bring forward. I think I've covered most of this. The site does not reflect the high quality of work and craftsmanship or the, the brand and the reputation of, of this company. Some of their examples are, are within Geneva businesses. I think the top one is in the, the State Street Diner, and the bottom is in the Harrington. So they're pretty well-known and respected in that, for their work. The plan that we looked at earlier that will require two zoning variances, we originally had more, but we have worked to bring the, the plan into compliance. So the, the two variances that will be sought at planning and zoning and, and returned to the, to the city council, as is the procedure, would be one for parking on the Simpson yard, I think we're calling it a corner side yard now, and the other would be a deviation from the East State Street design standards to allow for a light fixture that is not the, the East State Street pole. It'll be a different pole, very similar pole, but a little more cost-effective. And since the parking lot is at the rear of the, the business and it doesn't front East State Street, we think that these, these are good compromises to try to, to close the gap in the project funding. So what are we proposing? We divided the project into site improvements and Simpson right-of-way. So for the site improvements, we are proposing, oh, I don't know what happened to the little graphics, but we're proposing investment shares where, I'm sorry about that, I don't know why it crumbled up like that, and the other one's missing. So we, we proposed, we're proposing investment shares of $52,918 in grant money to assist with the site improvements, which is about a 61% grant for this. And then, we're also proposing that for the Simpson right-of-way, we pay 100% for that project from the TIF fund. That is, when you put these two together, it makes the public investment 67 to 32. It is a higher percentage than what is usually proposed, but this project is unique because you've got this longstanding use of parkway, and you've got such a high hurdle to overcome to bring the parkway back. A lot of our incentives too, when we are looking at the public to private shares, we will also include the purchase of the building, which we have not here, because the building was purchased several years ago in a family transaction, but there, if we were to include that purchase, if they were a new business coming in to purchase, you would have a lot higher split. At the end of the presentation, we'll tell you why this is, is justified, which we're at the end now. So, we talked about meeting the several goals and objectives of the East State Street TIF, eliminating deterioration, obso- app- appalescence, obsolescence, excuse me, improving the streetscape, so we went through those. We also will be encouraging high-quality of buildings, other investment in the area. But the main thing I would like to underscore right now is that the incentives that are being, are being proposed have actually, are actually less than what the property has paid into the TIF throughout the year. There's a significant EAV jump at this property from when the TIF was formed till today, and you can see that there. It's, it's more than doubled in EAV, and there's been a contribution of tax dollars in excess of what we're proposing in these, in this financial package. So I think that that's important to consider, and we really do believe that there is a but for here. Without this level of assistance, I think we're going to have a really hard time seeing this property improved, and I don't think we should let our TIF end with this property this property improved, and I don't think we should let our TIF end with this property left in this condition, and not, not investing in, in a business that is, a property that has been there for this long.
Thank you, Kathleen.
So, we have our, what we would be doing to support this project.
Thank you. Do you want to take questions now, or did we want the property owners to be able to say a few words? Thanks for coming tonight, and thank you for your patience. We really pushed you to the limit here. Do you mind reintroducing yourself, just for the record?
My name is Yvette Cortez, and this is my husband, Israel. We are now the second-generation owners of Isaac's Upholstery and Furniture Solutions. It is a family-owned business. My dad started it before I was born, so I actually was raised in the business. I have been doing it full-time now for 25 years. Now, the funny thing is, I don't upholster, and I don't even know how to sew, but because of my skill set and the knowledge of what I have and what I was raised in, I was able to see and really learn, obviously firsthand. I did actually go to school and get my degree in interior design, so I've applied that to the business. And it's really something that I am very passionate about. My husband is kind of what we call a silent partner, because he has come on board about four years ago to help me run the business. We really try to make everything that we do very easy, simple. Our biggest thing is making the process super simple for our customers, and really doing, finding different solutions for our, for our clients, whether it's completely recovering. We do residential, we do commercial. She was, Kathleen was saying, we've done the Harrington. We've done a lot of small business around the area. We've done even, like, Hotel Arista. So, we've done a lot of larger, commercial types of projects, and we do lots of small jobs, repairs, foam replacement, custom cushions, outdoor furniture. So, really, there's a vast array of services that we offer, and we've been in Geneva for about, well, over 20 years, and we love it. We love Geneva. We want to be definitely more rooted in here, and we appreciate you guys taking the time to hear our request, and it's our first chamber meeting, so, or our first council meeting, so we're happy to be here.
Great, thank you. Well, I could definitely tell when there's a change in ownership, because it seemed like there was some real effort to kind of increase that curb appeal, and I recently got a quote from you for a chair of my mom's, and logistically, it's not going to make sense for me to bring it up from Springfield, but it was so easy. You're right. Like, the quote process for reupholstering was, I loved it, and the customer service was great, and I'm sure, I know with COVID and supply delays, a lot of people are looking at furniture in their houses, and the love of vintage, and saying like, hey, how can we reuse this, or how can we update this for modern times, so?
Yeah, and I always say, it doesn't have to be antique to reinvest. Furniture that was actually made, you know, 15, 20 years ago was actually probably better quality, structure-wise, than a lot of the new stuff today. Unfortunately, it's not to bash the new companies, but there's a lot of new furniture, and unfortunately, the price point and what it looks like is always appealing, and sometimes it may seem as though it's, you know, less expensive, which it sometimes is, but obviously, because we're a small company, we believe in putting good quality products inside. We always take apart, you know, so somebody actually has to get in there and take apart all those staples, and we unstitch the pattern, and I've got a great team who does all the actual work, and picking up and delivering is something that we offer to our customers, so they don't really realize that we will come to your home and pick up. And even better, we definitely do a seven-day turnaround. That is our average. So, once we pick up your furniture, it is seven days, and it could be an entire room full of furniture. It could be a small cushion. A lot of our smaller jobs, we can turn around in just a few days, but we really try, again, to make it very simple, easy for our customers, and, yeah, so we appreciate that.
Great, thanks. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. You've used your services before, you always do good work. What I hadn't seen here, you've got plans to split this into a retail space in your, well, a separate retail space. How would that be reflected on the exterior? Would we see facade improvements?
Yes. Our goal is to renovate the building inside, to be able to have, where we currently operate, a retail space. We would then relocate my showroom, because with COVID, I realized I don't need as much space. And so, we would definitely do some improvements after the parking lot to work on the facade. That's definitely important. A lot of the biggest things would be windows, new doors, painting, all those little details that we could do to try to make the overall building look better from the outside, along with the inside.
So, I don't know if, maybe it would be, Kathleen, to get back to the slide of the, that has the front facade.
Oops. Uh-oh, end of slideshow.
That's fine, right there. It's, well, unless you can make it bigger, I suppose.
Maybe someone come out of the magic door?
So, where would you imagine changes on this facade here?
Probably not too many changes, just really the, that were the, what is that? That would be the west side of the building. So, that door entrance would actually still stay there. So, we wouldn't do anything major, just other than replacing old doors with new doors, updating old windows with new windows. On the house side of the building, which is on the east side, there is another entrance over there, and so if we did operate potentially like an office, space would be on the east side. There's actually a door that would also could lead out to the new parking lot as well.
So, I don't see a door there. You're saying you'd add that door to?
Well, the door that's currently there on the west side of the building is right at the corner. It's the west side of the corner.
Oh, right. The east side? Or I thought, oh, in the, oh, it's in the rear.
South side.
Yes, so the south, so we currently have on the south side of the building, there's a door where our workshop entrance is, there's a garage entrance there, and then, of course, our current main showroom door is on the front northwest corner.
Thank you. I think the rest of my questions would be for Director Timoshenko. Pardon me if I missed it in the, in the draft agreement. Is there any, is there any way that our investments are tied to performance on moving forward with other work?
They are not. We had, we had a draft that did that at an earlier stage of discussion, but we, we do not have that tied in now. There's a number of reasons. Partially because those improvements are going to be done, you know, as time allows and as money allows, so I think that there's concern from their end of being tied into it, because if their, if their, their first money will go toward the business, so that will, may have to be deferred. Secondly, the agreement won't live on past that inducement, so I don't know what that would look like, yeah.
And the, where would the, where again would you be, I guess this is for you, where again would you be splitting the properties for the separate rentable space?
So, the section on the building there that's white, that's where we currently operate. So, that would be the retail space that I would move out of. The back of the building is, I mean, the building is pretty big, so the back of the building, which is where our workshop is and our garage, I would actually relocate my office back there.
Okay.
And then that entire white space there, or the white spaces, would be the retail. And then the house side is a two-story, more like office space, because it's kind of, it's an older house, so that would be more for like an office type of a rental space.
And I think this may be moot because of the expiration of the TIF. We had talked about including requirements to periodically report on progress, but this is going to evaporate soon, so I'm not sure that, I will let that bother me then. That's it, thank you.
Alderman Meere?
This is just for Kathleen. Thank you. I mean, I think it's amazing that you guys have operated this business for so continually in Geneva, and I really support improving the lot behind here and the right-of-way conditions. I actually go over this area quite a bit. The question I have for you, Kathleen, is the drawing that was in this packet wasn't in our packet tonight, and I just, why wasn't that drawing with the parking lot included in our packet for review ahead of time?
Probably, I didn't, I didn't think of that, but it wasn't one of our attachments. It could be an exhibit to the agreement. I think that that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I found the, the drawing that was in the packet really confusing, because it looked like we were just improving the East, the State Street right-of-way, and you're talking about the Simpson Street right-of-way as well, and a parking lot.
The drawing in the packet was the right-of-way exhibit, because the agreement includes language that the owners will dedicate, if possible, the right-of-way for the East State Street. So, that's, was referencing that. But we did not have an exhibit. We can add that exhibit.
I think that would be really helpful, because I just got very confused if, if the new median on Simpson Street that's shown on the drawing that was in the packet is part of this, or if it's, you know, a separate thing altogether.
It's not part of this.
So, that's part of the East State Street project?
Correct. So, this would just be the, and we will include that, we'll add that as an exhibit, and we can also send it out, also, in advance, so the council can review it. You will have another chance to look at that separately, though, because, like I said, it's going to have to go to planning and zoning for the two requested changes, so you'll get that closer look. But we can add that, that's, it should have been.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, like I said, I think that this is a great improvement to the east side. It's a gravel parking lot. It definitely needs to be improved, so I'm in favor.
Anybody else? Alderman Kilburg?
How much of the, what, what portion of the property is going to be impacted by the East State Street improvements? Are we, are we, are we taking several feet there, or a few feet?
I believe it's just construction easement. Yeah, and I think it's just, it looks mostly like it's a temporary construction easement, but there's a little bit of right-of-way along the front. It's just not very much, just a very slim amount.
Okay. So, you haven't had any negotiations yet, as it relates to the property that's going to be needed for the East State Street improvements?
Have you been contacted by anybody else?
Okay. I guess my question, I've always sort of wondered, and I live about 100 yards from, from your business, landscaping. You know, I think some landscaping as a part of this project would be, would be a positive as well. Have you ever given consideration to landscaping? And is that something that you're anticipating doing at some point in time here?
Yes, I think it's actually part of the plan that we have. We actually had, when we contracted our engineer to do the parking lot plan, they did a landscaping plan as well, that was city-approved, or not city-approved, I'm sorry, based upon the city ordinance.
Okay, that's not included in?
It's at the rear. It's not in the front.
It's not up front here?
No. You're going to only have along Simpson, and then there's landscaping that would be in the parking lot that would be required.
There won't be any in front?
Not in this project.
I mean, there's space for it, though.
There's space for it.
You know, I understand the costs associated with doing something to the facade of the building. I'm just saying, I think landscaping would, would give it more curb appeal, and I would think, I'd like to see that as a part of this as well. I know, though, I just don't think the cost associated with some landscaping would be that great. Anyhow, that's all I have.
I think the issue that you have is that you only have so much that the private side can contribute, and there's a heavy lift here for just, you know, doing the parking lot and making it code-compliant. What you're doing by helping at this level with that heavy lift is that you're going to give that a boost to happen in the future, and they do have those goals for the future. And that is really the only way, I think, that you're going to achieve it, because I have looked at it every which way of trying to make it a larger project, but you only have so much private, and you're trying to leverage that public, and where's that comfort level? Already, we have a pretty significant public side, and you would just be adding that to the public side as of right now.
What, I had one other question. This TIF expires, was that in the document? The TIF expires, the clock is ticking on that, right?
Yes.
And what do we have left in that TIF fund, TIF 2?
We just, it was posted on the, yeah, it was like, hold on. 1.13?
I have it right here.
1.13 million?
Yeah.
1.13, okay.
As of April, when the?
And a lot of that is earmarked also for the East State Street project as well.
Okay. Are we, are we expecting to spend all of that by the termination of the TIF?
Yes.
Okay. It's all dedicated already?
Most of it, a lot of it is dedicated for the East State Street construction project, for those properties that fall within the TIF. If you, as we said, we anticipate spending most of this before the conclusion.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you, Kathleen.
All right, before I recognize Alderman Marks, who's next. It is past 10:00 PM. Do I have a consensus that we should continue going with this meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. All right, Alderman Marks, and then Alderman Bruno, I believe.
Kathleen, I like the idea. Don't get me wrong, just, so the TIF ends in 2023. It doesn't sound like all that work will be done by that, is that correct?
The work under this agreement?
Yeah.
Will be done by the time that we have to close the fund. That will be required.
Which is 2023?
Well, because Illinois is in the rears with taxes.
It's '24.
It's going to be '24.
Got it. That's, that's what I wondered, because it gives them an extra year, because there's a lot of work to do there.
Right, and it's already, by the time they get through zoning and planning, if they can do this in the spring.
But if, if they can't, then if we don't get it done by 2024, it's all over, correct? I'm going to follow up on Dean's. Is there more public money to put in that for landscaping in the front? Or are we really just too close with that TIF, because we're not sure what that land acquisition is going to cost? If we're going to do it, I'd like to do it right.
Well, I know, but what does that include? You would have 100% funding of landscaping at this point.
Road will be constructed.
Right.
When the East State Street project starts, that's going to be a two-year project, so I don't know if you're kind of throwing money after something.
Thank you, yeah, I got it, okay. Because after this, there's really, after the TIF, can this TIF be extended?
Yes.
Okay.
By legislative action.
And that, we could give it another 23 years?
We would have to get legislative action, but yes.
Oh, it would take, our council, or?
No, our council would have to get state legislation.
Okay, got it.
It happened, I mean, again, it sounds onerous. It happens all the time for various reasons, but it does require the state action.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's, that's, that's it. But we do feel we're comfortable enough that we have this money in the TIF with all of the State Street acquisition.
Yes.
Oh, got it. That's all, that's what I wanted to hear, because we don't know, I don't think we know exactly what that public is going to, that those right-of-ways are going to run us.
For the, for the past couple of years, when we've looked at the budget for TIF, we've included this project.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you.
I'm going to recognize Alderman Kocarog, because he hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thanks for being here. I guess I was just wondering, what's the state of the building on the inside? What's the, the code compliance, fire suppression, electrical? There was a change in ownership. I think sometimes that usually requires sort of an update to some codes. Is anything like that, that, I don't know if that's true or not, but is any, how is it looking? it looking inside?
Since I've been going in there, it's greatly improved. It's very nice, beautiful showroom, very appealing. When you walk in as a customer, I feel good about it. It does not reflect, the outside does not reflect the inside. But we don't, we don't retroactively require code upgrades, and this was not a change of use, so, you know, I don't believe it's sprinkled.
My question was really if we're gonna make an investment in a building, not in a business, like you started out, what's the state of the building? I mean, if we're just doing the outside, I get that, and that is a big improvement, I believe, to the streetscape, but if, if it doesn't have the bones to last the time, I don't know, that concerns me a little bit, and I just didn't hear that addressed anywhere. And then what further costs might that, and, and, okay, so it doesn't happen retroactively with the change of ownership, but what, what does trigger that, you know, when you are required to come up to code for fire suppression and all that kind of stuff?
There's a few things that trigger it. One, in Geneva, is a change of use. So if you were to create a use here that was a, a higher hazard level within the codes, so if you were to propose a restaurant here or an assembly type use, and you were going from retail to assembly, you would trigger some of those code upgrades, so you don't have that, that situation here. I would, in my opinion of, of somebody going here and looking at the business, you, you've got a very old building, so that building's been there for a long time, and there's no reason to think that it wouldn't continue to be that older structure. And the, the white part of the building is a brick portion of a building. They've got the warehousing in the back and the production room, and then they have a beautiful showroom, retail space at the entrance. The, the improvements that they're proposing, that they're talking about are more functionality of the building and aesthetic of the building, and making the building work for, you know, the modern business that they're trying to run. It's not like they've identified that they need certain code upgrades. So as far as I know, they're not looking to put a new electric system in or new plumbing. I don't think that there's issues like that. I think the bones of the building are pretty good, and it's getting it to function the way that they need it for their business and to support other businesses in a modern setting. And the reason that we've, you know, separated this whole big picture is because it was just too big of a project, given the wherewithal and the ability for the private side of the investment. So you really have to parcel it down, and unfortunately, we don't have another 20 years yet on the TIF. But if you did have a younger TIF, you could come back with phase two, phase three, you don't have that opportunity. So you're really looking at, you know, what is the hurdle that they're facing right now from making this property more functioning and better appeal visually? And the hurdle is the way it looks on the outside, the site, because if I was going to open up a business that might be compatible, I wouldn't want to do it, even though inside I'd want to, because it's beautiful and the, the coal tenancy would be of great benefit. But you just look at the outside and say, well, how are my customers gonna park? So that's the impediment that I think is step one. We hope that this incentive will give them the boost that they need to be able to continue to do the work incrementally, moving the door, doing the windows. They've talked about, you know, creating better showroom space, better windows, better show windows.
But all the things they're looking at are all things that NASA needs to accomplish. How is this about the sustainable present? How are these...
It's a new job I have to do, it works just now.
So, I, I think that, you know, in a, in a perfect world, I would have loved to have been able to bring up several phased proj, and I did, we did, we were trying that, and then at one point, we were like, wait, let's just skinny this down to, because it was becoming something that was untenable. And, you know, okay, let's back up, let's look at this fresh-eyed, and let's look at the, let's solve the biggest problem, one of the biggest problems first, and then, you know, you'll, you'll continue to work on, on, on growing that investment at the location.
I guess I'm, I'm still like, I'm kind of really focused maybe on the fire suppression, because if we're gonna, again, we're gonna invest in a building that's not fire suppressed, and then they have a fire, now all of, all of our investment.
But we're not. We're invest, we're investing in a site and a site plan and an exterior improvements to the site. And, you know, we have many buildings that are not fire suppressed, so I don't...
But not necessarily with public money.
But we're not investing into the structure.
Oh.
We're, we are doing the parking lot and the parkway and the exterior site improvements, which are non-conforming and not up to minimum code standards today. So we'll be improving, you know, drainage on the site, accessibility, appearance. It'll be easier to maintain it. I don't know how you plow that gravel now.
No, I follow, yeah.
And to you, to you, to your point too, you know, in regards to it falling all apart. Yeah, to your point of it falling all apart, I know, just, you know, we, we do not carry a lot of debt without getting too, too personal into the finances. We've been able to sustain ourselves, even during a pandemic, we're very grateful for that. And again, apart from putting Kathleen on payroll for all her great advice and assistance throughout the years, we, we do plan on beautifying and investing. That's why the house side, and obviously, we know for occupancy, it will have to be up to code, whether it is or it's not, and that's what we anticipate. But like Kathleen mentioned, the parking lot's been something that, to be quite honest, it's not our area of expertise when you're coming out of a pandemic.
Yeah.
It's furniture solutions, trying to keep, you know, our part and our commitment to the city with, you know, property tax, sales tax, employee tax, and doing our due diligence and keeping the business up to par and building a reputation, not, not a temporary one, but a long-term one. We're looking again to bring occupants here to, you know, continue to kind of go in, you know, and, and spruce up the city as well, so our commitment's there. And again, it's just, you know, as a great leader, we're, you know, debt gives you any assurance.
No, that helps.
But, but it does. We don't carry a lot of debt. We're, we've been able to operate the entire facility. That's only half of the portion. I mean, there's a big portion in the back from the cleanliness. I know that the landscaping, it bothers me. I'm anal about that, you know, and can it use more beautification? Yes, it can, but you know, you, you have to operate a whole building, and apart from running the business, you're also trying to be a property manager, which, again, no excuse, we plan on doing that as well, but like Kathleen said, you know, it's handling that big task and just the engineering and stuff that we're not familiar with, and, you know, we're, we're, you know, again, to answer your point, we, we plan on being here for the long haul and adding, you know, joint partnership in the front where that white area is and on the house side as we reduce our space side towards the back, I guess.
So as long as I got you guys, where are you in the plans for the parking lot and all that? Are you, you know, when this gets approved, are you pretty much ready to roll? Because we got the...
Absolutely, yeah. We're looking, obviously, yeah, with being so far in the year with contractors, with the whole paving of, you know, you gotta, we're, we're trying to handle the electric, the concrete, and then the paving to do it in that order, you know, to meet contractors, we're getting towards the tail end of the year, so we're looking, if something like this were to get approved, probably springtime, you know, so. And from there, that point on, I mean, right now, for example, the house side, just again, to answer your question, we just had the roof done. We had it done with a permit, done the right way. We plan on having the whole facility completely painted and just continuing to make those improvements, but the parking lot's probably been the biggest thing that, you know, again, it just takes time as business owners to go after that, manage the property itself, and run a business, just, you know, and come out of a pandemic too, so.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Congratulations on surviving the pandemic.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here again. I appreciate it.
Alderman, well, Swanson hasn't spoken yet, so.
Thank you. I, I think this is a great plan to improve the streetscape on Simpson, which always looked a little different compared to other things. I think we've gone down a lot of rabbit holes in this conversation, kind of veering into, how can we spend more money on this project, or should we extend the TIF? So, so for that reason, I love the project. I think it's great. For that reason, I would like to call the question, and, and just, we have a, we have a proposal on the docket right now. I'd like to call the question. Thank you.
Sorry, consulting here, so. Well, I guess, do we have a, a second? All right, we'll go ahead and vote on calling the question one. Oh, roll call, sorry, sorry. Making sure. All right. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Nay.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Nay.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll vote, go ahead and vote on this. Let's do a roll call on the issue at hand. We had a motion, right? Yeah, yeah. No, no, that's okay. So again, we're voting on for B. Okay. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes nine to zero. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to for C. Consider approval of draft resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Kane County for animal control services. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All right, Marx and Caven.
Okay, so Metro West has negotiated an animal control agreement with Kane County on behalf of Kane County municipalities for many years now, so the agreement before your consideration this evening is a one-year agreement with an option of two one-year extensions. The agreement is substantive, substantively the same as the former agreement with only minor changes. There's no cost entered in the agreement as it is a fee-based service. Fees for 2022 have increased slightly, but I would note that we budget about $500 annually for this service, and since 2018, we've spent a little more than $440 total. So again, it's just a negotiated agreement with Kane County to do animal control services. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion from the deans? No? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. On to four D. Recommend approval of a draft resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of one or more obligations to be issued by the City of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois. Do I have a motion? Alderman Marx and Alderman Mayor is the second.
Okay. So the electric utility has identified future capacity and infrastructure needs for the city's electric system due to increased development of the North Geneva Business Park, Fabian Parkway, and South Kirk Road corridors. The expansion is currently in the engineering phase. The resolution presented for approval, for consideration tonight will allow the current engineering and construction costs to be reimbursed from future bond proceeds. Passage of the resolution does not obligate the city to issue bonds, however, it does set the maximum principal amount of the obligations expected to be issued. The city council shall retain full discretion to approve by separate action any future bond issuance. For historical context, the last new electric fund debt issuance was in 2007 for 2.45 million for the West Side substation, with the final debt service payment having been made on May 1st, 2021. With us this evening, we do have Director Cruz, Superintendent Holton, and Director Babica, who can answer any additional questions you may have.
Do we have any questions or discussion to justify their presence here at 10:30 at night, so? Anything? No? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
And I would just note then, we will be bringing this forward. We do have a special committee at the hole next Monday, so we will be adding a special city council meeting so that we can get this approved, so that's on record, and then any expenses from there on out can be attributed to future bond proceeds.
Do we have any public comment or new business? Nope. All right, then we're gonna go into closed session on pending litigation, five ILCS 120 slash two C11, and collective negotiating matters between public employers and their employees or representatives, five ILCS 120 slash two C2. No actions expected to be taken tonight, but I do need a motion to go into closed session. Alderman Swanson, Alderman Kassarag with the second. We will do a roll call to go into closed session.
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Swanson?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes with eight in favor, one absent. And we'll clear the room. Now a motion to return to open session. Alderman Mayor?
Second.
Alderman Caven, because I'm looking at him, so returned, a voice vote to return to open session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Back in open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Marx, motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.